Welcome everybody to this meeting of Yarra Council's September meeting. Yarra City Council acknowledges the Wurung people as traditional owners and true sovereigns of the land now known as Yarra. We acknowledge your creative spirit, Bungjul, and their ancestors and their elders. We acknowledge the strength and resilience of the Wurung who have never ceded sovereignty and retain the strong connections to family, clan and country despite the impacts of European invasion. We also acknowledge the significant contributions made by other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people to life in Yarra. We pay our respects to elders from all nations here today and to their elders past, present and future. We have all the councillors here tonight with the exception of councillor Crossland, who's on parental leave, councillor Mackenzie, who's sick, and councillor Davies, who's running a little bit late. First up, I've got a very sad announcement to make. Obviously, we want to express our deepest condolences as everybody in Yarra, the council and the community, following the tragic deaths of two police officers in Parpunka. This is heartbreaking loss, not only for Victorian police but also for the whole community in the high country and throughout Australia. We acknowledge the enormous risks that police officers take every day to keep us safe and we honour the courage and dedication of those who serve. To the police officers and staff working here in Yarra, particularly at Collingwood Police Station, where one of the officers was regularly based, please know that we stand with you. Your commitment to protecting our community is deeply valued and in times like this, we're reminded of just how important, at times how dangerous, your work can be. Our thoughts are with the families, colleagues and loved ones of the officers who have lost their lives, with all members of the Victorian Police as they grieve their loss. If you are able, can you please join me and stand for one minute silence to remember Detective Leading Constable Neil Thompson and Senior Constable Vadim Devart Hotov? Councillors, thank you for that. I'm going to ask you all a question in terms of conflict of interest. If you don't have a conflict of interest, please respond. I do. Do you declare you have familiarised yourself with the matters being presented in this meeting and that you do not have a conflict of interest? Councillor Aston?
I do.
Councillor Davies?
I do.
Councillor Gomez?
I do.
Councillor Harrison?
I do.
Councillor Ho?
I do.
Councillor Wade?
I do.
And I do as well. Councillor Mackenzie and Crossland are absentees. We have minutes of the last meeting. I'll move the minutes of the confirmation of the last meeting with one change being that we had an email from a resident who's saying that the question that they'd written in was different to the question that was actually asked, so we just amend the minutes accordingly. I've run that past the officers, they're ready to do that. So with that small amendment, I'd like to move the minutes of the last meeting if there's a secondary. Councillor Harrison, thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That's passed unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to public question time. The first question is from Ben Wardit. If you're here, Ben, please come to the front. And just press that button and you've got three minutes to ask your question. Thank you, Ben.
Thanks. Just before I ask, I wanted to check, I actually have two questions. I'm not aware of any restriction in the governance rules.
No, you can only ask one, sorry.
And where is that stipulated?
In the local, in the rules for the meetings.
Because, I mean, that...
I'm telling you right now, you can only ask one question. It's in the rules, we're not making it up.
And can the CEO confirm that that's the case?
Okay, I've been asked if somebody can confirm.
That's a change to the previous governance rules.
Yes, it has been changed.
It used to be two questions. Okay, thanks, just clarifying. Thanks. So my question concerns the recent summit held on the Gold Coast and supported by the Combat Anti-Semitism Movement, which, to which all councillors and mayors were invited, and flights and other expenses were offered to be paid for them, that this summit has links to the Israeli Defence Force, Gillian Segal, the anti-Semitism envoy, and various other right-wing entities. One of the main goals of the conference was to promote the IHRA definition of anti-Semitism, which has been widely condemned by human rights organisations. They've released a report claiming that the watermelon, kaffir and free Palestine are anti-Semitic symbols. So can council please confirm whether any councillors attended the summit and if so, whether their flights and other expenses were paid for by the summit or by council?
Thank you for your question. I'll respond. Just by the way, in terms of the governance rules, fifty-three point three, if you want to look it up, will confirm that no person can ask more than one question. Nobody on the Yarra Council was funded in any way, shape or form to go to this conference. I didn't go. I'm not aware of anyone else, if they did, if they did go, it would be on their own, it would be under their own funds, but not a cent was, came out of Yarra Council to support this conference or to pay for anyone to go to this conference.
But did any councillors attend the conferences, my question?
Okay, well, that's, I can't make councillors answer that question. I've answered it, I didn't go. If anyone else wants to answer, please feel free to do so. You don't have to. Gomez?
I'll just state the fact that I didn't go.
Thank you.
I'll also say the same.
Same for me.
Okay, you don't have to answer this.
No, I didn't go.
No, I didn't go.
All right, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
The next question is from Herschel Landis.
Thank you, Mayor. A recent age article referenced that 1,005 dwellings were approved in Yarra over the last 12 months to June 2025, suggesting an enormous challenge if it is to achieve the government's target by 2051. The latest quarterly report from Yarra reveals a significant decrease in construction fees, statutory planning, income and open space contributions as building activity slows down. Recently, a Planning Decisions Committee meeting on April the 29th refused a planning application for a 17-bed rooming house. In this decision, a majority of councillors ignored officers' recommendations for approval and instead relied on prejudiced hearsay. In their refusal, the corner of Horrell and Victoria Street with abundant public transport options and located in a major activity centre with ready access to retail and health facilities was deemed not appropriate in the context of the local area and not compatible with nearby users and that the proposal impacted local amenity. It was abundantly clear that the councillors had not informed themselves fully of the building's potential to provide a quality, low-cost co-living space suitable for vulnerable members of the community currently sleeping rough or victims of domestic violence or students for the nearby university. Meanwhile, the mayor has referenced the proposed demolition and replacement of public housing towers in Yarra, claiming it was akin to ethnic cleansing. He pointed to what he says was white privilege living in North Detroit and coloured disadvantage of those living in the towers. The mayor is also keen to promote a multimillion dollar development of council land around the Collingwood Town Hall to provide 200 units for people struggling to afford rent in Yarra. And this raises the question of how does this posturing over housing reconcile with the council knocking back permits for a 17-bed, low-cost co-living housing opportunity or frustrating housing opportunity elsewhere in the municipality in what the mayor calls the white privilege communities? In my view, the refusal decision of 29th of April was shameful and certainly not an example of sound, objective thinking to facilitate housing opportunity in an appropriate location. It seems to me that this council prefers to spend thousands of dollars on lawyers in VCAT fighting a rooming house application rather than helping putting a roof over people's heads. So my question goes to how does this council square the circle? Why is this council seemingly playing politics with the vulnerable around housing while at the same time...
Thirty seconds.
...denying useful applications in order to placate privilege? And can this council be trusted to deliver housing opportunities in a housing crisis? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landis. I'll take that question and I thank you for raising in this question the issue of housing because it probably is the most important issue in the city of Yarra. We're under a lot of pressure from the community and from the state government to boost housing supply because we all know throughout this continent, which is the size of Europe, it's got the population of Holland, has got a housing crisis. That is not an indictment of this system and how we do housing, I don't know what is. So we here at Yarra have been very, very proud, not only this council, but I have to say, even though I'm a big critic of previous councils, also of past councils, in doing our bit to boost housing supply. And we've met our targets. We've just recently been given a new target of 44,000 new applications over the next decade or two, and we've said openly, we're very happy with that target, we'll do everything we can to try and meet that target because the people in this audience, the people watching will know that if you're a late teenager, twenties, thirties, it's really, really tough to be able to buy a house, it's just dream world, but even rent in the city of Yarra. So we have had a sea of cranes in places like Cremona and South Collingwood, in my ward at the moment, in Johnson Street, it's one of the few places in Melbourne where there's lots of housing developing, taking place. We also want to ensure though, by the way, that it's not just housing for the rich, that some of those housings have what they call inclusion rezoning, which are aimed at people on lower incomes. We're also of the view that it's hypocritical of the state government to tell us to build houses when they've announced they want to demolish the 44 towers for the poorest and most marginalised people in Melbourne. You can't have both. You can't tell people we need more housing and then literally knock down the towers of the poorest, most vulnerable, most marginalised people in this, not only in the city of Yarra, throughout Melbourne. So we're very proud of our opposition to that and we've set up an advisory committee on that matter. In terms of the Collingwood Town Hall project, it's true. Unfortunately, you, Mr. Landis, voted against that project five years ago to have housing for young workers in the city of Yarra. This council is putting it back on the agenda. It'll be coming to the public council meeting in a very near term. It's the signature flagship project of this council, a project that the last council, including unfortunately then councillor Landis, voted down. So we're something we're very, very proud of. In terms of the issue of the rooming house, I actually voted against some of my colleagues on that matter, but a lot of information has come through since then that questioned some of the arguments that were made at PDC by that developer claiming that this was going to be an amazing thing for the poorest people in North Richmond, South Abbotsford. So I think, thank you for asking, and I hope you come every month for the next three and a half years because your questions are always the most important questions, housing. Our record on housing is second to none and I'm so proud of this council that we have hit our targets and will breach our targets. But unlike almost all of the councils of Victoria, we say it's not just houses for people who can afford them, but we have to build houses for people who can't afford them, our kids, who are making their, who are baristas, who are working in our pubs, in our hospitals and so on. We have to make sure that some of those houses for people on lower incomes and that includes saving the towers. Thank you, Mr. Landis. The next question is from...
But before you go on, Mr. Mayor, can I just add to comment to that?
Yeah, absolutely, councillor Gomez.
I just noticed that there are people in the audience tonight who might remember the campaign we all ran to try and build a great outcome at the gasworks site. The gasworks site in Fitzroy North is going to be the location of, I think roughly 1,200 apartments, but most importantly, the community was able to agitate very strongly for a school to be built, a sports complex to be built, and most importantly, we asked for a target for affordable housing. And I think it's one of the largest targets for a development in the city of Yarra that I know of and is 20%. So irrespective of whatever arguments are made about housing, I know that in Nichols Ward, that one site alone is doing a lot to try and address situation. It'll never be enough, but we do admit.
Thank you. Councillor Wade?
Yep, sorry, I just had a follow-up question, just a fact check on something councillor Landis said. He said we're spending thousands and thousands of dollars on lawyers. I assume we have a standard process and I'm sorry, I'm not sure who to direct this to, for when council has a position. How does that work, I guess?
Councillor Wade, thank you. CEO?
It depends on the significance of the appeal, whether or not in fact it has been appealed. Sometimes council will use lawyers, sometimes we'll send officers. We've got very skilled and very skilled senior experienced staff who often represent council, so it's not always lawyers. I couldn't talk to this example specifically, but I think it's not safe to assume that every time we go to VCAT, we're represented legally.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Landis. Shane Delphine, you're the next person, welcome. Shane Delphine, obviously from Wycombe and a well-known Fitzroy resident. I have to say that, it's my ward. Shane, welcome, you know what to do, you've been here many times and thank you for your question.
Yes, thank you. Great, Shane Delphine from Yarra Climate Action Now. Thank you, Mayor, for your kind introduction. My question tonight, so Yarra introduced a 7pm to 7am CAT curfew from the 1st of January 2024. We're aware that council undertook an education campaign in the lead-up to the implementation of the curfew to ensure that the community was made aware of the change. However, we're unsure about the measures, about what measures council is currently undertaking to ensure that the curfew is adhered to. One data point to help us assess the possible effectiveness of those measures is via infringement notices. Thus, my question tonight is how many infringement notices have been issued for contravention of the curfew since its introduction? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osman. Mary Osman?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Shane, for your question. I can confirm that one infringement has been issued by council for cats being at large or not securely confined to the owner's premises during the curfew period. As discussed within the numerous council reports, since commencement of the curfew, there's been a high level of self-regulation by owners with very limited complaints made to council and a reduction in the number of cats that have been impounded. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Matthew Chrisfield, you're next. Matthew, no, Matthew, we'll move on to Peter Long. Oh, Matthew, welcome.
Mayor Jolly, given your concerns regarding Elphington Grammar's illegal use of fencing and gates, I thought you should be aware that council itself appears to have used fencing illegally to expand the open sports ground use and reduce the community's access to Quarries Park. Council has constructed 40 metres of two-metre fencing in Quarries Park. This fence creates a new enclosed area around the Yambler Reserve water tank, which is being used by the club for bin storage and general storage of signage. Regardless of the signage, this constitutes an expansion of the open sports ground use, which requires written consent under clause 5205-6 of the Yarra Planning Scheme. Council is not exempt from this requirement. Council planning officers have confirmed that no such written consent approving the expansion of the open sports ground use exists in relation to the enclosure. As such, the expansion appears to have occurred illegally. It appears the lesson the council has taken from watching Elphington Grammar use fencing illegally to expand its land use is, what a good idea, we should do that for the soccer club in Quarries Park. In addition to the obvious legal issues, I also note the fenced enclosure is an eyesore that disrupts a key east-west curfew line. It's not clear why the fencing is even required considering Yambler Ramsden Reserve has water tanks with no fencing. And even if it's required, there's no justification for the fenced area to be three times the size of the tank and pump unless council always intended for the area to be used as club storage. This brings me to communication issues that have plagued the project. In summary, council excluded any mention of the new fencing in its description of the project provided in the 23 and 24 and 24, 25 budget, despite the fencing being the largest change. When the community members raised concerns regarding the lack of community consultation or councillor approval of the new fencing, Mr. Hewitt responded at the November council meeting and council stated on the update on Yambler's sporting field upgrade website that upgrades to the Yambler Reserve soccer field were approved by Yarra City Council's budgets, despite knowing that neither made any mention of fencing. Therefore, based on the actual public information that was available, it was impossible for councillors or the public to be aware of the fence from reading the budgets. Informed by this information, council declined to pause construction of the fence at the November meeting to allow a proper consideration of the fencing, which may have arisen legal issues. In response to community requests, council circulated...
Thirty seconds.
...plan for the project. This episode is utopia on steroids. Given the community's concerns were focused on fencing, why did council's update and Mr. Hewitt's response at the November meeting state that the upgrades were approved by the 2024 and 25 budgets, but omit the fact that neither budget made reference to new or replacement fencing? And will council be opening the southern access point to the public in accordance with the plans it circulated to the community and reducing the illegally fenced enclosure to the minimum size required for the safe operation of the water tank?
Your time has run out, thank you. Mr. Hewitt? Can you just turn your microphone off, please? Matthew? Thank you, just do it again.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Matthew, for your question. Just to correct, there's been no expansion of the sports grounds, exactly the same size, and there has been no restrictions to access to that sports ground.
Matthew, you can't have a second shot at this, mate. Sam, just finish your question.
Thank you, Mayor. As we've spoken about previously, the approval from the project came with the approval of the budgets, as you've mentioned. It's true that council doesn't approve every design element of every project and we also don't consult on every design element of every project, but your point is made, we'll be mindful of project elements that community members might have a view about and try and alert communities about those during consultation phases. And your final question about the southern access point, I think we've answered before, that is, it's a maintenance gate and we generally keep those closed so vehicles don't access the sports ground. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Peter Long, you're next. Peter, are you here? Thank you, Peter.
In recent social media posts, Mayor Stephen Jolly claimed that his council had raised the target for tree canopy in Yarra from 17% to 21%. This target of 21% was in fact set by the council way back in 2019. The existing tree canopy in Yarra is already more than 17%. The mayor seems to be either so disinterested in climate that he is unaware of what the council is doing or just spouting any old numbers to try and make his council look like they care about protecting Yarra residents from the effects of climate change. In another post a month ago, the mayor claimed works on the Elizabeth Street bike lanes would start in the next few weeks, which is highly misleading. My question is, who is responsible for fact-checking the mayor's social media posts to make sure he's not lying or misrepresenting the city of Yarra?
You've, just turn your microphone off. Turn your microphone off. First of all, you can't come up here and accuse somebody of lying because you're breaching the Local Government Act. Second thing is, I haven't lied. Every single one of the statements that you put in my mouth, I did say and they're factually true. And not only are we increasing the canopy to 21%, we're increasing the canopy in areas that are currently like a concrete jungle, North Richmond, Fitzroy, Collingwood, parts of Abbotsford, 600 new trees this year. We've also, thanks to the federal government help, about to move Collingwood Leisure Centre from gas to electricity. In terms of Elizabeth Street, in terms of Elizabeth Street, that is one of the proudest things that this council has done, where the last council bulldozed through a superhighway on Elizabeth Street against the wishes of the overwhelmingly Vietnamese community, destroyed their access and egress for their homes, for the temple. We've listened to the community, we put that back on track and the future housing projects, one of which is going to be hopefully approved in about an hour's time at this meeting, will not make the mistakes of the past. We will ensure that all projects of that character are consulted with the locals, we listen to the locals and we don't force it down their throat. Because that's one thing that's going to guarantee that people are opposed to bike lanes when you force even a good idea down people's throats. So nobody fax checks my things because there doesn't need to fax check my things because they're true. And if you think that they're false, go online, which I'm sure you do, I don't, I'm not a follower of you online, but I would imagine you would do, and criticise. But don't call somebody a liar at a council meeting if you want to be able to come back here again and ask a question. and ask a question because you're breaching the rules. You can't do that. Anyone else want to talk on this matter? Okay, thank you. The next person is Joe Gagolino. Thank you. Come, Joe, how are you? Good, good, just press that button until the red light comes on.
Firstly, you all know that I'm very critical of management in relation to parking issues. And I'd just like to say thanks very much for a massive improvement in the last few months in particular. It's not perfect, but there has been a massive improvement. So I've got to give credit where credit's due. So thanks very much to all the staff and the councillors who have taken that on board. As you know, Rowena Parade and Richmond Terrace take huge traffic down to Punch Road. Decisions to limit car lanes will increase traffic down these and almost all streets in the area. On the Yorsey website, it also says introducing weekday peak hour no right turn periods into Bridge Road for drivers heading south on Lennox Street. There's already banning for the morning peak, but I'm not sure if this is supposed to mean morning and evening peak. My question however is, and we already have massive traffic flows avoiding Swan Street and Bridge Road, so all these proposed changes of bike lanes, increasing bike lanes, widening bike lanes and limiting car lanes. So the one that's proposed, for example, down Lennox Street to Swan Street, we now have two lanes proposed to go down to one lane, which would mean right and left turn traffic from one lane, which will be ridiculous. By limiting the road lanes and Swan Street and Bridge Road and Hyatt Street with Lennox Street, residents who drive will find it even harder to travel through and out of Richmond. There are already bike lanes at these intersections, but limiting car lanes and parking spaces, there are about 18 car parking spaces to be taken away, will negatively impact residents in these areas. How can the widening of the bike lanes down Lennox Street in particular and several of the others be stopped and just implement the priority signalling, which is what will make travel along Swan Street, Bridge Road, Hyatt Street safer? And what specific consideration about the impact of removing car lanes and impacting streets such as Rowena Parade, Richmond Terrace and other streets has the council taken?
Thank you, Joe. Mary Osman?
Thank you, Joe, for the question. And first of all, thank you for acknowledging the work that the parking crew are doing. I think I will pass that feedback on. Specific to your question, so consultation on seven intersection upgrades, including at Swan Street, Bridge Road, Hyatt Street and Lennox Street, across Yarra closed yesterday after five weeks of community consultation. And it would be remiss of me not to thank you, the community, for all of their feedback. We're about to start analysing all of these responses. The proposed changes are part of council's ongoing programme to implement the Yarra Transport Strategy, Victorian Cycling Strategy and other streetscape improvements, as has been done over many years. All issues, including car parking, safety and traffic, will be considered before council makes a final decision on these projects. More information, including the project's rationale and background information, is available on our website and a report will be coming back to council in November to consider these. So thank you.
Just add to that, Joe, the difference between this council and previous councils by projects is that we're going to put out ideas out there. Some people will love them, some people will hate them, and some people will be in the middle. But rather than have iterative consultation or no consultation and definitely no vote at a council meeting, this is a different process. There's going to be the consultation that Ms. Osman just described, but it's going to be topped up in your suburb of Richmond or in general by, like next Tuesday, councillor Davies has got a public meeting. Last week, we had a meeting by councillor Harrison. Councillor Ho is going to have a meeting, all the councillors are going to have meetings to supplement the council's official consultation. And then finally, it will come back to the 11th of, I think it's the 10th or the 11th of November, the November council meeting, the 2nd Tuesday in November, for a vote in the public section of the meeting where people can come again and say what they think. This will be extremely democratic process and not a single bike lane will be forced down the throats of the people of Richmond or indeed any other part of Yarra if they don't want them. And what we find is that when we do consult, we get a better product in the end. So thank you for putting up your submission and that will continue on. I've got councillor Wade and then councillor Davies.
Thanks, Mayor, and I agree with everything you just said. I'm sorry if I missed this in what Ms. Osman said, but just noting Mr. Gagolino mentioned Rowena Parade in particular. Can I just confirm that we've got a road safety study for Rowena Parade in the budget? I'm getting a lot of nods.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, a road safety study is in the budget and our new office has started this week.
Thank you, councillor Davies.
Thanks for coming down, Joe. I really appreciate it. People yourself really help just bring the local issues to the surface. I'll certainly be advocating for a common sense approach to all the bike lanes, much like working with councillor Harrison we did for Coppen Street and others. So you've got a friend in us. Obviously, we'll look at all the details, look at everything, all the facts and all the feedback, but know that you've got a friend in me.
Thank you. The next question is from Elizabeth Honey.
When I first started to ride my bike further afield in Melbourne, I saw the bike stencils on the roads, but it wasn't until ages later I was delighted to find there was an overall plan, agreed of studied and agreed upon proposed bike routes. Now I use several of these bike paths all the time. For now, the bike path grid is piecemeal, as we've experienced with the Elizabeth Street bike lane. But little by little, improving each section is important. It's difficult because there are so many demands on our roads and the job mostly falls on local councils that are strapped for cash. And despite the fact that the streets belong to all of us, cars have ruled for so long. The bike paths are not like the big projects for cars and public transport. And yet, the more people use the bike lanes, the more they will replace cars, which is a win-win, especially for the inner city, where everyone will gain more space. Many people have no idea about the overarching plan of bike paths running north and south and east-west across Melbourne and what a great bike city Melbourne is becoming. I've been thinking about the best way for Yarra to get across its section of the bike plan. Well, a picture is worth a thousand words. I was thinking, a funny cheerful map for 2026? What is the best way for Yarra council to advertise and share its bike pathways with Yarra residents, riders and everyone?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Mary Osman?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Elizabeth, for your question. Actually, we updated our Yarra maps in 2024. So they provide details about walking, cycling and public transport routes in Yarra. The map's available on our website, we also have hard copies that are available at the town hall and we would be happy to provide you with a link if that would be helpful. Progress on delivering the new deal for cycling, walking and schools is measured via various reporting channels, including the council plan, budget process and taps, and we do from time to time update our maps.
That's great news.
Thank you, Elizabeth, thank you. Mary Osman, Catherine Commons. Councillor Davies, I apologize.
I just wanted to say, Elizabeth, thanks for coming down. I'd love to see you next week at the town hall with a handful of ideas. I really appreciate you coming down and putting some more big ideas and just the small toothbrush issues. So next is a discount drinks, everyone, by the way, just if you're wondering.
Thank you. Catherine Commons, welcome.
Hi, I don't know if I should be speaking now. Thanks, Mayor, councillors. My name's Catherine Commons, I'm a local for 35 years and I probably have a little bit of a dissenting voice to some of you. Urban planners all around the world right now are talking about like 10-minute, 15-minute walking cities. Fitzroy, seen as the first suburb of Melbourne, is actually exactly that. It has always been exactly that. And it's evidenced by the fact that almost all of our heritage housing, it doesn't, most of them don't have stables. Even though we had politicians and doctors, lots of publicans, they didn't have their own horse and buggy for private transportation. It isn't part of our heritage. Our streets have always been full of children in the laneways, in the streets, playing. Our Greek families would sit out the front of our terrace houses as they watched the children that go past. They were our first neighbourhood watch, if any of you are old enough to remember what that was. We have this, as Elizabeth just mentioned, the moving forward Yarra's transport strategy for 10 years. In my opinion, this is about 150 years in the making. It is an excellent, well researched, with exactly what the objectives are, what the problems are. It actually talks about the simple fact that it's not going to be everything for everybody. We can't pick up our street, our houses or our shops and move them further apart to get more public use out of those square metres. But for a very long time, and I think it's 2023, the council introduced on-street parking for residents. It's charged at something like less than a dollar a week. That is not a true cost. And so we are discounting parking, prioritising parking per square metre than all of the other uses. The children that need to go to school, the mums that need to take their kids to kindergarten.
Thirty seconds.
So my question, sorry, okay, I'll just skip to the next bit, is what is the council doing to encourage the reduction of car ownership in our suburb? It is a primary part of achieving not just the transport strategy, but also our environment, our health and wellbeing strategies. If we're going to under-cost on-street parking-
Your time's run out, Catherine, and congratulations on your appointment last month to one of the advisory committees. Ms. Osman, did you want to take that question?
Through you, Mayor, and thank you, Catherine, that was a very big question. To distill it down, council does have a number of policies-
Catherine, can you just turn your mic off, please?
Oh, sorry, whereabouts do I do that?
Thank you, Mayor. That encourages people using multiple options for transport, whether that be walking, bikes, as we spoke in the previous question, cars or public transport. We use good design in new apartment buildings to make sure that people can actively use, or have choices, I suppose, to what kind of transport options they take. So council has a number of those policies. Council will be looking at parking in its curbside and parking strategy that it's commenced. So there's a number of avenues for the community to have input in that, but also to make sure that, sorry, someone's waving at me. No, okay, that there's lots of different options that people have. So choice is key to that discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Osman. The next question is from Sarah Deasy. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, thank you. Hi, everyone. My question is about plastic and the enormous growing volume that we are witnessing all over the country. Plastic recycling companies are struggling to keep up with increasing volumes of plastic waste. Can officers advise whether the volume of plastic waste generated in Yarra is consistent with these national trends? And if Yarra's plastic recycling processing partner, APR Plastics, is managing the volume of, A, the contents in our yellow bins coded 1, 2 and 5, and also the soft plastic collection at the recycling depot?
Thank you, Sarah. Sam Hewitt, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Sarah, for your question. Yarra's mixed recycling rates have slightly reduced since the introduction of the container deposit scheme and the purple glass bin service. Yarra's tonnage rates are within the industry trends with lower than industry trend for contamination levels. Council's processor doesn't currently accept P1 plastics as it doesn't have an end market for the product. All other plastic materials processed through our contractor have an end market and is recycled back into new plastic products within Australia. In addition, the soft plastic materials collected through our Clifton Hill Recycling Centre is also recycled back into new products. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll just add to that, Sarah, if I can. I think we're very proud of our record, and as I was explaining to Mr. Long before on environment and climate action, but the one thing that we're behind the eight ball on is PT1 or P1 plastics. I think all I can say to you is that I've got a list of 10 things that I want to incorporate in next year's budget, speaking as a councillor here, not as mayor. And fixing that is top of the list. So I would encourage you and Wycombe to continue your efforts on this because I've had lots of emails in the last three weeks, ironic or coincidentally, on this very topic of P1 plastics and the fact that we don't offer that service here while other councils do. So we need to deal with it. And that's not to cut across anything Mr. Hewitt said because that's factually true, everything that he said, but it is something that's of concern to me as mayor that we need to fix that issue and I'm hopeful that you and Wycombe can keep your breathing down our necks on that issue. Does anyone else want to respond to this question? Thank you, Sarah. Are there any other questions that anyone has in the audience? Yes, I'll take the, at the back, Karen, please, first, and then the gentleman just sitting to her front.
Hi, my name's Karen Havenga and I'm from Richmond. I think we've all noticed the advertising that has been everywhere for the one hour of free parking. We've seen corfluts on the sides of bins. We've seen digital advertising on Facebook and Instagram, et cetera. And I've even seen an enormous digital billboard on Bridge Road. And so my question is, how much money's been spent on advertising the one hour of free parking? And was the cost of that advertising included in the $540,000 that was estimated to be the cost of implementing that policy?
Thank you for that excellent question. I'm going to ask the CEO to respond. CEO, please.
Through you, Mayor, thanks, Karen, for the question. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to take it on notice and get back to you.
Thank you, Karen. See you next month, hopefully. The next person, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was Greg Spark, if I'm not mistaken. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor, for taking questions without having to register. So my question is about environmentally sustainable design and sustainable design assessment in the planning process for works in the public realm. Why is Yarra not considering environmental sustainable design and sustainable design in the planning process when it's planning works in the public realm like parks and gardens such as Edinburgh Gardens with respect to the paths and waste management, but also in the streetscape upgrades? For example, recently, we had the gutters and hard pavements in West Garth Street, Fitzroy and Delbridge Street, Fitzroy North and Fenwick Street over in Clifton Hill were upgraded. But I don't think it properly addressed your sustainable design principles with respect to stormwater management, permeable paving, which for footpaths and car parking areas would be about five degrees cooler, and waste management and climate change. So that's, if we have to do this for our homes, I think it's important that it's also applied to the public realm. So that's my question.
Thank you. Mr. Hewitt? Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Greg, for the question. I'll take some of those. I don't know that I can quite talk to the planning elements, but my colleague, Ms. Osman, might contribute as well. Just in terms of- Um, just in terms of, uh, building in the public realm, we do use environmentally sustainable design elements. We have our own guides, uh, they're used. Anyone wants to build a building, uh, for council, um, needs to follow those. Just in terms of, um, you referenced, uh, permeable pavement. We're currently running a couple of trials on permeable pavement. Uh, they're proving successful working with Melbourne University on those. They're being assessed and they've been a great, uh, success so far. Uh, in terms of the, uh, street that you mentioned, uh, we re- need to renew, um, many of our five hundred kilometres of street. The council owns two point one billion dollars' worth of assets. A renewal programme each year is important. Where there are opportunities, for example, like water-sensitive urban design, then they are included. We're doing some of those design works in Carlton this year. Uh, I suspect the street you were referring to, the stormwater management assets were okay. They're in good condition and performing well, and that's probably why they weren't. I'll just invite my colleague, if there's anything further, Mayor.
Ms Osman, you don't have to, but if you're welcome to add, if you want to.
Thank you, Mayor, just briefly, um, environmental sensitive design is considered in all elements of, of council's projects and where planning permits are required for projects that, um, Mr Hewitt has just outlined. They are assessed against the same criteria that all planning permit applications are assessed against. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, councillor Davies.
Yeah, just a quick note, I think it's a really good point. We are working on it as councillors. I think councillor Wade put up a motion last session about, which was supported, which was for the renewing, for addressing mo- many of the concerns you've just raised, just in the renewals process of our local lanes. Um, so we're trying to do that incrementally, so it's also cost efficient, but also, you know, love to hear thoughts on how to address it more widely.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Spark. Are there any other questions? Yes, please come to the front.
Um, Anne Jenkins from Lennox Ward. Thank you for greater transparency and community consultation in recent months and keeping residents informed. However, the state of street bins is appalling. The overflowing bins Facebook site highlights how bad maintenance is. Bins are not emptied on a regular basis, kept clean and the area around them cleaned. In particular, Friday evenings and weekends are the worst with bins overflowing by six P M. And that is only the start of the evening. Consequently, pavements and gutters are covered in litter. Council needs to set an example to all with bin maintenance. In hotspots such as Swan Street, particularly when there are events, emptying street bins needs to be occurring several times a day. We have many visitors to Yarra who come from interstate or overseas for major events, and they often flock to Richmond before or after events. It is an embarrassment with the state of our bins, pavements and gutters. Businesses that leave their bins out all, all weekend also do not help, particularly if they're not fully closed when placed on footpaths. Some suggestions, consider changing the collection days along activity centres so that we avoid having to look at unsightly bins that are placed out on a Friday or Saturday and sit there all weekend, overflow and get polluted with the wrong rubbish. Council, look at what bins could be placed at the rear of businesses and shops for collection if trucks can easily access those areas. For those businesses that leave their bins out permanently, could council officers make a visit to remind them of their obligations and look at their storage facilities? A call I made some time ago did fix one of those issues. Likewise, pay visit to residents who are repeat offenders in leaving their bins out. Some time ago, a neighbour said that some nearby flats had started leaving bins out. A call to the owner's corporation fixed that situation. Um, and I suggest that there be some reminders, um, in the next newsletter about the placement of bins and the removal of them after collection. Um, and remind them about, um, the location of, um, in Burnley Street where cardboard can be taken. Um, I do think that the glass bin collection.
Thirty seconds.
Residents could be changed to every, uh, four weeks instead of two weeks. Um, because I think most would say that it takes a long time to fill a glass bin. Is council doing anything to improve the state of our street bins? And are council officers taking steps to address the issue of bins that are left out for extended periods of all, or all the time? Will council give thought to the suggestions of changing collection days for businesses?
Thank you, your time is up. I'll answer that question. Um, one of the things we did with the new council is we said that with parking, uh, with waste strategy, we need to look at the rules, we need to look at the way we're doing it, and can we do it better? So the waste strategy, uh, review is about to start literally, um, and I strongly encourage you, Anne, to make that submission tonight and any, and an even more advanced one to that, um, in that, in that strategy review. The waste strategy view and the parking strategy view are two of the most important strategy views we've done uh, in any council at Yarra for some time now, because close to fifty percent of our community don't access our waste services if they're living in a mud, in a multi-unit development, or they are parking either. So, um, um, I can ask you, answered to respond, but you're just going to get it taken on notice. I just think that, because we're about to launch this strategy review, I'd encourage you and all your neighbours to get really involved with that, because it will determine how we do waste in this city for the next decade. Uh, it's a once in a, well, not once in a lifetime, it's a once in a decade opportunity. And, um, I'm sure your ward councillor will keep you totally in the loop on that matter. Councillor Davies wants to say something?
Yeah, just quickly, thanks, Anne. I, I think it's really important about bringing these things to light. Um, like you and I think many in the community, communities, particularly in Lennox and probably other parts of Richmond, we're really waiting to, you know, get the waste strategy to, in motion and put in place new, new, a new strategy, basically. Like you, I walk up and down Swan Street, it's covered in glass, there's obviously, you know, bin volume issues, especially on the big game nights. We all see it, we've got a real problem with how the, the state of the, the streets. Um, so I know that I'm here advocating for it, but we do have the waste strategy moving. But thank you for your patience, but also thanks for coming in and knocking on the door, giving us a bit of a kick up the butt on these issues, I really appreciate it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we're getting to the big one, the big main item that most of you are here for. Item seven point one, the first of our council business reports, the proposed discontinuance of road abutting thirty-seven to forty-five Best Street, Fitzroy North. I'll just remind anyone here in the audience, um, that because we had the extraordinary council meeting, um, on the first of July, uh, with just submissions on this matter and this matter alone, there'll be no submissions tonight. Um, so what's going to happen now? We're going to hear from the off, we're going to ha- have questions from councillors to the officer. In particular, Fadi, um, uh, Fakuri, who's coming to the front right now, who's the officer in charge of this process, will then, um, uh, have a discussion amongst the councillors, and then we'll have a vote on the matter. So that's the process from here on in. We've got Fadi, we've got Sam Hewitt, the general manager of this area. So let's start from the beginning. Are there any questions from councillors to the officers? Councillor Gomez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the report, it's comprehensive. It's been a long journey for, um, the community and for various councils. I just want to ask it two small questions, just to confirm that, you know, I and all the other councillors have all the information we need to make a determination tonight. The very first one is that I, I, we have received all four hundred and nine submissions. We've seen the texts from all the residents, so we, we've been able to assess their feedback.
Through you, Mayor. Uh, yes, you have, as a, as a bulk of every single submission and as a summary as well.
Good, thank you. The next one, I'm just confirming that the traffic report at note twenty-six on page fourteen of the field report, or the officer's report, sorry, just confirming that that traffic report is a, is a, a genuine record of the, um, existing usage of the lane, so the usage of the laneway by pedestrians, cyclists and cars in both twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five.
Through you, Mayor, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gomez. Any other questions from any councillors? Councillor Wade?
Uh, yes, I was just wondering, uh, Fadi, if you could speak to the size of the land that, um, is proposed to be discontinued, um, and sold versus the size of the land, um, the area, the square meterage of the land that is proposed to be gifted to council at the end of this process?
Through you, Mayor. Uh, effectively, we're talking about seventy-five square metres, uh, of land to be, of road to be discontinued, uh, or proposed for discontinuance, and we're talking about just over one hundred and twenty-two square metres of land to be gifted to council in return.
Thank you. Follow-up? Yep?
Uh, yeah, it's not a follow-up, but it's another one, if that's okay. Um, could you just, uh, give us an overview of some of the recent, like, laneway or road closure sales that the council have done and the amount of those, the amount those were sold for?
Mr Fakuri? Yep?
Yep, uh, through you, Mayor. Uh, so we've had a few, um, uh, uh, with some of the most recent, those discontinuances that have been completed by council include, uh, six oh nine, or road abutting six oh nine to six fifteen Church Street in Richmond. It was about twenty-one, uh, point two square metres that were discontinued. Um, and it was sold for, or in, within the process of selling it for one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We have ninety-eight A to one oh six Balmain Street, Cromwell. Thirty-five point five square metres were discontinued and it's, but we're in the process of finalising the sale for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, and one that was, uh, a recent decision by council was ninety-nine to one oh nine, uh, to one oh one Bridge Road, Richmond, uh, about twelve square metres that we're finalising the sale for one hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Councillor Wade?
Thank you, um, just one more, and, uh, Mr Fakuri, thank you. I'm not sure if this one's to you or to somebody else, um, but just the, the trucks that have been parking illegally in the laneway. Obviously, whatever happens tonight, this isn't, it isn't going to get built on straight away. Um, how much have we previously enforced that against, whether it's the applicant or somebody else who's parking illegally in the laneway? And if not, is that something that we could look to do in future?
Uh, Ms Osman?
Uh, th- through you, Mayor. I can't give exact numbers about what kind of, um, enforcement has happened around the, the supermarket. Um, but that is something that council can come back to councillors if they're interested. Thank you.
Um, any other councillors with questions? Okay, uh, I'm looking for, we've got an officer recommendation on the table. We've got an alternative motion foreshadowed by councillor Gomez. Councillor Gomez, um, I'm not asking, we're not going to ask you to speak to that, but just explain in very simple terms what your alternative motion is, and if it's a secondary, I'll let you speak to it.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, um, I'm not going to add much to, to commentary. I think the alternative motion reads pretty clearly. Uh, three reasons, uh, why I'm suggesting that we not discontinue the road. I'll leave it at that.
So it's a direct contradiction to the officer recommendation, yeah, thank you. Um, is there a secondary to your motion?
I do.
Councillor Ho, okay. Now that we have a secondary to that motion, councillor Gomez, I'm going to give you three minutes to speak to your motion, please.
Again, I don't think that we need to, uh, labour on this point. I think we've established the fact that the councillors have received the information they need to make, uh, a determination on tonight. Um, I've chosen to provide an alternative motion to the officer recommendation. I think the, um, the parts one, A, B and C can be read by everyone, and it's pretty clear. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ho.
Nothing further to say.
Yep. Okay, um, would anyone else like to speak to this motion for or against? No? Councillor Wade?
I will speak against. Um, this decision isn't an easy one, um, and I, like my fellow councillors, have heard from members of our Fitzroy North community, including people I like and respect, um, with regard to this laneway and in particular, trying to keep it open. Um, in particular, I've heard the concerns of the residents of Egremont Street about the effect of the change in the exit point of the laneway and what the impact that might have on their street. Um, I thought it was important to speak tonight to, to outline my reasons, because I think that respect is due to the community. Um, and I think also we can acknowledge, and, and I apologise for the use of the lawyerism, but reasonable minds may differ on these things. Um, while, um, well, tonight, I, I think as councillor Gomez has rightly said, it's, it's, we're confined to quite a s- specific narrow reason about whether the laneway is or is not reasonably required, um, not about the development itself. And, and I thank submitters for keeping themselves to the, to that point as well. I think that's been in all of the submissions we heard verbally and also in the ones that have been written to us. I've been really impressed that people have confined themselves to that, um, particular issue, because that's something that I think is quite hard to do when there's a lot of other stuff going on. Um, to start with, I wanted to note that the, this situation is, it's a little bit different to the traditional sale or discontinuance, because it's more a land swap than it is a, um, a flat discontinuance or sale. And we, we deal with flat discontinuances or sales a lot. Um, we've got, I think, one of them tonight, and then we've got another more complicated one tonight. Um, but in terms of the effect on publicly owned land, we're, we are getting back more land than, than would be sold. And so I think that's just a, it's a different circumstance, because it's not something that we're giving up once and for all time. We are getting land back, and in fact, we're getting a little bit more land back, uh, in addition to the market value or, or what we're told is the market value. Um, I'm not saying this situation is perfect or my preferred scenario, but it is, it is a bit different. It's not just gobbled up, it is redirected. Whether it's reasonably required, um, we look at the number of users and that number of users is relatively low, but it's, it's not nothing. Um, while there are permits approved in the southern section of this laneway, I think that's important to acknowledge, and several submitters did. Um, there is a distinct kind of pinch point in the middle of the laneway that will mean that these cars hopefully will, like, primarily travel south.
Thirty seconds.
Travel, um, using the southern part of the laneway. Um, the laneway has a, there's dog leg in it, which also means visibility is already quite poor, so it will be an even weirdest shape if it is sold, um, but not out of step with what exists elsewhere in the city. Um, on the question of market value, um, that's why I asked the question about what we've previously sold laneways for. It's approximately the same square meterage, which is what makes me think it's probably okay. Um, though I, I would be happy to discuss that amount with my colleagues if somebody raises something alternative. And there were ten percent of submitters in support of this application. So I, I, I think it's important to acknowledge that exists and we're a council of nine, so i- if I'm alone, um, there's ten percent of people who, who thought the same.
Thank you, councillor Wade. Anyone else like to speak to this motion? Um, I, I, I'll say something. Um, road discontinuations, we've got two later on tonight, are normally super non-controversial, because the laneways to be discontinued and sold are actually dead space. Um, some of them are actually dead ends. Um, this one is different, it's an active laneway, and it's the first time in my experience we've considered selling an active laneway to a developer. And that's reflecting the fact that we've had four hundred, uh, submissions imposing and only nine in support. Some people rather naively have tried to link our vote tonight to the question of housing supply and the fact that we have to have more housing, which I'm a big fan of. I'm literally a construction worker building these things. But, um, uh, they argue that not discontinuing the laneway or selling it is somehow going to negatively impact on housing supply. I would argue that the actual opposite is the truth. The seller's development to the benefit, I should say, of one developer, a- and one developer only on the laneway, and it will hinder future residents that are going to move in on that lane. We know there's a whole bunch of applications from the mail, oh, the old, um, car mechanics, to many, many other applications that are going to be built on that lane. They can't use St George's Road because of the tramway, so they're going to be using the laneway. Um, and, um, the, 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 even the, the road, the ratio road traffic assessment said, and I quote, "Future development along the laneways could generate additional vehicular movement. Um, in any event, modifications to the laneway, worn way or passing opportunities via setbacks may be necessary." In other words, compulsory acquisition, we're buying into if we sell this laneway. To make it L-shaped, um, it's not going to be as good for residents who are going to use this laneway as a main egress and agress, especially when, um, uh, um, with, with, with the, with the fact that at one point it's only two and a half metres wide. If you've got an L shape, can you imagine when a delivery truck comes down there? It's going to be absolute case in a two-way, tiny laneway for all these residents with an L shape in it. We're making it worse, not better. Um, and who's to say that they won't flip the site if we discontinue the laneway? And a new developer will stick to any deal. Um, and this is what happens when you take a public road and sell it to the private sector. Um, you, 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 you put yourself in, at this risk, the residents at this risk. Something that nobody's spoken about enough is the impact that this decision, if we were to discontinue it, would have. An Egremont Street residence, they've got nothing to do with this, they're just living their life. And now we're going to spew out all these cars onto their street. Um, I mean, how's that going to be good for them? It's not going to be good for them. The, 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 the Road Safety Act says, uh, that a road authority must remove a road from its register of public roads if the road authority has made a decision that the road is no longer reasonably required for public use. The applicant has to prove that, they clearly haven't proved that. Um, it'll be good for their profits, it'll be good, they say, to increase housing supply, which I think is actually not true. And it's actually not what we have to decide on. what we have to decide on. It'll be to the advantage of one applicant, the developer, and to the disadvantage of the people who move into that site, but more importantly, all the people who move into future sites on that laneway, that they're going to be stuck with an L-shaped laneway, which is going to cause absolute chaos. And on that basis, I think we cannot support this continuance. And I support councillor Gomez's alternative motion. Would anyone else like to speak? Councillor Gomez, would you like to exercise your right of reply?
Thank you, Mayor. Just thank you for all your comments and for councillor Wade as well. I think we need to be very clear that the matters in which we discussed tonight are very particular about the laneway and not about anything else. And I stand by the ultimate motion I've put up. And I commend my fellow councillors to support it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gomez. I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour of councillor Gomez's and councillor Ho's motion, please raise your hand. Davies, Gomez, Ho, Jolly, Harrison, Aston. Those opposed, councillor Wade, that is carried. Thank you. Thank you, everybody for attending. I'm going to, I'm going to propose a five-minute break so that people can leave and we'll come back for seven point two domestic animal management review in five minutes' time. Thank you. Councillor Aston, councillor Gomez. Seven point two domestic animal management review. We've got two registrations. First up, we've got Shane Delphine. Welcome again, Shane. Once you press the button, you've got three minutes to speak on the domestic animal management review.
Shane Delphine from Yarra Calumet Action Now. So, White Can welcome the introduction of a seven PM to seven AM cat curfew from the beginning of 2024. However, during the debate that was held during 2023, we indicated that we saw the 12-hour curfew as merely an intermediate step to a position where cats were confined to owners' properties for 24 hours. And I think there was like some councillor support of that position as well. Confining cats to owners' properties is a win-win. It has beneficial outcome comes for the cats and reduces their impact on wildlife and surrounding neighbours. Such a confinement regime is in line with the Safe Cat Initiative, which is supported by both Zoos Victoria and the RSPCA. White Can is somewhat disappointed with the officer's report, which we believe fails to provide councillors with relevant information in several regards. It fails to present any of the experiences and learnings from other Melbourne councils that have already instituted a 24-hour curfew, such as Manningham and Knox. It fails to draw on the experiences of Yarra's apartment owners who own cats because many of these cats already have a 24-hour curfew. And as around half of Yarra residents live in apartments, that implies that a substantial proportion of Yarra's cats are already likely subject to a 24-hour curfew. The officer report to council in June 2023, which informed debates about the imposition of the current curfew, sets out some of the body of research that clearly supports a 24-hour curfew. The current report fails to reference that research nor the clear message stemming from that research in favour of a 24-hour curfew. With the majority of community in support of a 24-hour curfew as described in this report, White Can is disappointed that the report fails to suggest options for ways in which a 24-hour curfew might be implemented across Yarra. For example, we think maybe a long, say 12-month phase-in period might be appropriate during which infringement notices.
Thirty seconds.
Aren't issued to owners and their cats, giving them time to adjust. And in the interim, of course, prospective cat purchasers would be advised that any new cat introduced into the municipality would need to be confined to their property at all times. White Can urges councillors to take this opportunity to take steps to move towards a 24-hour cat curfew in the municipality. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Karen Havenga, please.
Thank you. My name's Karen Havenga. I'm really glad that Shane has quoted all of the statistics and really good evidence-based reasons for why I think that a 24-hour curfew on cats is a really good idea and should be included in the domestic animal management plan. Because I want to talk about my experiences. I've had a couple of cats. I'm mostly a dog person, but I've had cats. Two of my cats have in fact died after road accidents and I decided I wasn't going to have any more cats. And then I noticed that the bird population in my backyard exploded. I had so many more birds in my backyard when I didn't have a cat. And I thought, I'm never having a cat again. The cat distribution service had different ideas and the kittens born under my house from the stray mother cat entered our lives. We also trapped the mother cat and the tom and left two kittens that had disappeared by the time we were trapping. So we now have two cats. They're permanently enclosed in my daughter's room. But I haven't really noticed, but what I have noticed since my dog died is that my neighbour's cats now have free roam in my backyard. And I'm a person who is lucky enough to have an entire backyard in Richmond. And what I've noticed is that those cats are roaming around and my bird population is no longer visiting my backyard. I'm not seeing those birds anymore. I don't know where they are. And the other part of it is my next door neighbour who gleefully almost said, "I don't have to clean out a cat litter tray because my cat roams." What I've realised is actually my entire backyard is my next door neighbour's cat litter tray. So, ugh, yuck. We don't allow people to have their dogs roam. If they had chickens, there'd be problems if those were roaming, or rats, or rabbits, or any of those domestic animals are not allowed to roam. So why are cats so special? I really think that the evidence of the officer's report and the engagement process that says that most of Yarra would like to see cats contained full-time is really a strong argument for including that containment in the domestic animal management plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. We've got no other registration, so we're going to go to question some officers now. If I'm not mistaken, we've got Steve Alexander Darrenborg and Catherine Pound. Welcome to all three of you. Councillors, have you got any questions to the officers? Councillor Aston? Go ahead.
Hello. I'm just wondering, given our relationship with the impounding facilities that we use and how key that is to the implementation of domestic, the damp, when does council next make a decision on which pound we're actually going to work with?
Thank you for the question. Through you, Mayor. The current contract is due to expire and I'll take it on notice in two years' time. We recently expanded the contract to three years. I don't have the exact date on me, but it is approximately two years, three years. So we'll be going out to tender, I would say, in approximately two years' time.
Thank you. Any other questions from councillor Aston? Any other questions from any councillors? I'm looking for a way forward. Nobody's got a, councillor Wade, way forward.
Yes, I have an alternate motion that I circulated.
Can we get it on the screen, officers, please? Before you speak to it, can you just explain in very simple terms what it is?
Yes, it is just to add the introduction of a 24/7 cat containment policy, but it would take a bit of time because of budgeting, et cetera, and has details around that.
Thank you councillor Wade. Is there a seconder for that motion? Oh, sorry. Of course you can, yeah.
Councillor Wade, would you be suggesting this is part of the 26/27 budget? Or what would you, in terms of timing, what are you thinking here?
Whatever staff are able to do. My assumption would be yes, but it's like for the, for the Gazette all bit at least, the resources, et cetera, might be the following budget. But Ms. Osmond, if you could help me out there, if you've got any approximation on when it would be.
So if this motion of councillor Wade was passed, can you give us some timeline in terms of councillor Davies' question?
Yeah, through you, Mayor, and thank you for the question. Council officers are currently focusing on the local law for the next financial year, being the 26/27. So we would anticipate this would need to hold over to the 27/28 financial year.
Thank you. That's your question. So do we have a seconder for councillor Davies? He's going to second that. Okay, councillor Wade, would you like to speak to that? You've got three minutes starting now.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you councillor Davies. Firstly, I wanted to say thank you to officers for preparing such a comprehensive report and for such a comprehensive response rate to the consultation. It's rare, I think, that we see that many people engaged on a survey about something like animal management. And I think it's really impressive what you are able to do and the number of people you've got engaged. With regards to 24/7 cat containment, I was quite surprised by the number of people that were for it rather than against it. Sometimes governments are accused of pushing ahead on issues before their constituencies are ready for them. And there are plenty of times where that's appropriate. But on this issue, it seems like we're actually lagging behind what our electorate is expecting. More of our community members, more of our voters want this than don't want this. Forty seven percent are in favour of containment, plus some in the group of 12% who are unsure or offered conditional support. Only 41% were against. As outlined in the report, the night time cat curfew we have is working, which is excellent. While we don't have a huge number of reports of non-compliance, and obviously we only have that one infringement notice, which I think we were expecting, we weren't planning to go in heavy-handed for the first, for the first few years. We're seeing less cats being impounded. So that's, that's really great news. It's great for cats as well as for wildlife. When a night time, while a night time curfew is a great thing and protects certain animals, there are other native species that are hunted and killed during the day. I did not find the fact in the, in the report that only 20% of native animals killed in Yarra are confirmed to have been killed by cats reassuring. That actually like freaked me out a little bit because obviously these things are really hard to confirm. So if we're able to confirm that 20% are killed by cats, it suggests the actual number is much, much higher. Furthermore, we know that keeping cats indoors keeps them safe and can increase their life expectancy by up to 10 years, which is pretty incredible. I've been told that in years gone by in Australia, it was normal for dogs to roam the neighbourhood. This, this wasn't happening so much in my childhood, but I'm told, you know, it was, it was semi-normal. And that was, that's something that certainly is still normal overseas. Not in every country, of course, but in plenty of places. Culturally now, nobody would dream of not containing their dogs at home. So we know that this is a kind of cultural shift that can happen. So we know that this is a kind of cultural shift that can happen. Indeed, in Yarra, as Mr Delphine pointed out, over 50% of cat owners are probably already containing their cats at home because they live in apartments and we don't have as much choice about where our pets can roam. We're quite contained. So if this is something that's standard for people in our smallest homes, then I think it's a standard that people in our larger homes can adjust to as well, and cats in our larger homes can adjust to. If we were to progress this consultation, there are options we could consider. Other councillors have looked at grace periods, they've had different rules for older cats to ones bought now. We could look at supporting lower income households in adjusting. And as we've just heard, it wouldn't happen for another year and a half anyway. councillor O'Brien and I didn't agree on everything last term, but we agreed on this and I hope my colleagues will support it.
Thank you councillor Wade. councillor Davies, seconding?
Yep, just a quick, I'm a bit of an old school conservationist when it comes to this sort of stuff. I've had many cats in my life. One at least has died in Richmond, been hit by a car, to Ms Havenga's point, brutally, destroyed my son's life unfortunately on that one. But I've also seen those same cats rain and present many native birds to me as a lovely prize, sometimes wrapped in tissues and adorning me as their master and so on and so forth. I do really love cats in particular. I love Burmese cats, it's just a little bit of a thing I've got, but they do destroy our native flora and fauna, or, you know, animals, local animals. So I do support this motion with councillor Wade, or this alternate. I would like to see some sort of, I guess, grace period or perhaps new cat curfew introduced, but something over the next two years that's developed to work with the community and make a difference. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this motion? councillor Gomez?
I understand the position that people have. I've had many cats in my life. The position that, or the way in which my wife and I, my family and I have managed it is to essentially train our cats to come in at night. I live in Fitzroy North, in an urban area, so I don't have the same experiences as my fellow councillors in terms of the kills being brought back. Our cats came home at 6pm every night because that's when we fed them. And as, I do the same thing, when the dinner bell rings, I come. So we would close the doors and we'd keep our cats indoors and then we'd let them out as we were going to work in the mornings, so somewhere between six and nine in the morning. Didn't seem to have an issue with that, our cats were safe. Our cats were neighbourhood treasures, they used to visit other people's places and bring them joy. So I don't agree with the idea of that the only way to keep cats safe and to keep the community safe from cats is to confine all cats to 24/7 indoors.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? councillor Harrison?
Yes, look, I'm going to simply state, I guess, the position that the officers have put in this report. They've said that there's not strong evidence that introducing a 24/7 cat curfew would bring specific benefits. We've heard the response to the question this evening that there's actually only been one infringement notice issued since this curfew that we currently have has brought in place. So, and there isn't clear support for this. Yes, there was, I think, 46% in favour, 41% not in favour. There was a group that was not, you know, unsure of their position on that. So there's clearly not a decisive amount of support in favour of this. It's very mixed and I think that was picked up by the officers, that it was actually quite a polarising issue for the community. So I'm not in favour of introducing something that there's not actually a strong case for or not evidence that it's going to bring benefits.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? councillor Wade, would you like to exercise your right of reply?
Yes, I will. Firstly, I think, I'll just say that there are experts in the field, a lot of them, there's a lot of research in this matter, and with all due respect to officers, that do say that cats have an impact on native wildlife, that pet cats have an impact on native wildlife. The invasive species council has a position on this, Sues Victoria has a position on this, a lot of biodiversity agencies have a really strong position on this, that pet cats are killing our native wildlife. I believe the native wildlife they're killing during the day are frogs, small birds, and I think there was another category of animal that they kill during the day, not at night. Some cats, like councillor Davies, are performative and they might drop it at your doorstep, but some are not. Some are just going to kill that creature and leave it where it is, just because you see it. Just because you don't see it doesn't mean it doesn't happen. I also question, I'm sure some people in the neighbourhood love seeing their local neighbourhood cat, but some don't. I get complaints from people who say, you know, so and so's cat is roaming around, or my neighbour's cat is roaming around and I don't like it. Doesn't mean that they're necessarily going to confront their neighbours themselves. I will also say that that one infringement notice, that was an intentional measure. We didn't want to go in heavy ham-fisted, you know, running to try to catch all these people who are adjusting to a new rule. The fact that there was only one infringement notice is because our staff do take an education first approach. Almost all of our neighbouring councils are moving in this direction, biodiversity experts plead with us to move in this direction. I really think it's a worthwhile measure and I hope I have support from my colleagues.
Thank you. We'll put that to the vote. All those in favour of the motion from councillor Wade and Davies, please raise your hand. councillor Davies, councillor Wade, all those opposed, please raise your hand. Gomez, Ho Jolly, Harrison, Aston, that's lost. So we're looking for an alternative way forward. Does somebody want to move the officer recommendation? Go ahead, speak to, just tell us what that is, don't speak to it yet.
Pressured.
Yes. Look, it just adds some reporting on the implementation of initiatives and results from the domestic animal management plan in the quarterly report on a six monthly basis. Not every report, but every six months, with particular attention to education programmes for pet owners, enforcement, partnerships with animal related organisations and businesses, increasing the rates of de-sexing, registration, re-homing and the return of animals to their home, reducing rates of impoundment and euthanasia. So really just trying to track how we're doing on these measures and, you know, I will comment that I believe it's an order that was brought in to introduce the cat curfew. That's something that could be done in the future without changing the domestic animal management plan itself. So these measures might help us make decisions in the future and ensure that we're on track.
You've actually spoken to it, but that's all right. Do we have a seconder? If we don't, councillor Aston? So I'll just go straight to you councillor Aston, do you want to second that motion, please?
Yep. I think it's really important that wherever possible, we use a carrot versus a stick approach with our community, particularly when it comes to the matter of our four legged animal and family members. I think there's a lot of really good stuff in the damp, focusing on education alongside compliance. There's some really good stuff in there around looking to introduce re-homing first as opposed to going straight to the pound when an animal's been picked up. I'm honestly surprised we haven't been doing this already and I'm really glad that this is something that we're looking into implementing. I do think that this amendment gives us greater transparency and visibility over how these actions are being implemented and whether or not they're having the desired results, so that we do have greater evidence about what we're doing, how it's working, so that we can tweak what we're doing as we go. Lots and lots of people along Yarra, within Yarra, do have pets, they are valued family members. And wherever possible, we should be working in partnership with the community to help them be effective pet parents and to limit their impact on the remainder of the community that aren't as pet friendly. But we need to have relevant data on the experience of the community and the effectiveness that our council actions are taking. So I support councillor Harrison's alternate motion so that we can be a more evidence based council in this regard.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this motion? councillor Davies? Oh no, sorry, I thought you were a person. I'll speak. The officers in their report said, and I quote, "No clear position has been expressed in favour for or against introduction for 24/7 cat curfew." It's over 40% each way. Over 50% do not support a 24/7 cat curfew. And I think the position of this council, whether it comes to bike lanes, whether it comes to cat curfews, whether it comes to anything, is that we need to listen to the community and have a clear majority in favour of a new initiative. And if we were just to pass this tonight, even with it, as the previous motion wanted to do with a two year lead in, that's not consultation, that's just early warning of a decision that we've pre-made. And the reason that it's questionable and the reason that there are some significant proportion of the population who are opposed to 24/7 is the cost. If you're living in a limited space, I'm the councillor for Fitzroy, but it's the same in every ward, to be honest with you. There's many, many terrace houses, older style workers cottages with limited space. And if you're living on your own, if you're on low income, if you're like a widower or widow, you're going to have to find the money to essentially build a cat run. Now, I would be in favour, as I'll be raising next year in the budget, for low interest loans like Burundara council are doing, for people who want to, you know, move their properties to be carbon neutral. Maybe we could look at something like that, that we have some type of support for households who want to be able to house a cat 24/7. We have to do it in that way because if you're on low income, this is going to be an immediate hit. Here, on this Tuesday night, they're going to read about it in tomorrow's papers. Never mind if you're a renter, that 40 plus percent of our locals are, where you've got to tell the landlord, oh, by the way, the council have told me I've got to keep the cat in 24/7. Like, that could be a real issue for young people renting, who've got landlords who maybe aren't the best. So I just think we need to slow down a little bit. We need to look at what the issues are as to why people don't agree with 24/7. If it's a financial thing, let's look and try to help them in some way and keep the discussion going. But we're in no way, shape or form ready, in my opinion, to tonight move for a 24/7 curfew. And that's why I support this motion from councillor Harrison and Aston, because it's a more, it's a more logical and structured way to moving to where we want to get to. Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? councillor Wade?
Yes, I will be voting in favour of this. I obviously would have preferred to introduce the 24/7 cat curfew, but without that, I still think this domestic animal management plan has merit and I think councillor Harrison's proposed change has merit as well. I just wanted to quickly correct the record, my motion did have consultation as part of the 24/7 thing, that's required for gazette of a change of that kind. So that would, absolutely, we'd have a much more thorough discussion with the community about what a 24/7 curfew would look like and/or if we did it. I wasn't proposing that we institute a new law overnight, but in fact, that consultation would occur. I also, just in terms of the people, 47% plus, it was 12% were unsure or qualified support, so I suspect that would add to more than 50%. I did have measures for low income people. I also note again, 50% of our residents live in apartment buildings, they're already adjusted to this. There are people in very small homes that have cats contained inside at the moment. So I think that's a conversation we really need to have with our community and understand what our community looks like because there are people who are already having to make a lot of these adjustments and it's currently quite an equitable situation where they are required to make adjustments and other people can keep impacting our flora and fauna. And I think we should consider that. But yes, I will be voting for this notice, this alternative motion.
Thank you councillor. Anyone else? councillor Gomez?
Just a quick point, councillor Wade. Are you suggesting that all residents should adopt?
Sorry, we've gone past question time, you've got to make it, you can make a contribution, but we're just, just under the council meeting rules, I can't allow you to ask a question at this late stage. Anyone else want to speak to this matter? Okay, councillor Davies?
Yeah, just quickly, just similar to councillor Wade, I do support this motion. I think it's a great motion that councillor Harrison's put up. I won't repeat what councillor Wade's already suggested, but very similar grounds. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? councillor Harrison, would you like to exercise your right of reply?
I will, just because we haven't mentioned dogs, we've only talked about cats. You know, there was a lot of work, you know, we have over 6,000 dogs in the municipality as well. That's a big issue for our community. I just wanted to point to the findings on that about, you know, the real need for cleanliness of public spaces, the ability for people to enjoy public spaces without unwanted interactions with off-leash dogs, the need for people to take greater responsibility for their pets' behaviour and waste, also the desire for improved streamlined pet registration processes, balancing the needs of pet owners, education enforcement, clear signage as well. So there was a lot of feedback that, you know, 637 people provided as part of the consultation. So I don't want to sort of overlook that and I, you know, and there was the other key thing that was said there, was that there was a strong desire for improved pet friendly infrastructure. And this is something that I've, you know, already referred to the officers to be considered in the 26/27 budget, because I've been part of the Citizens Park Working Group and this is a big issue for lots of people. So I just want to finish off with that.
Okay, thank you. I will vote on councillor Harrison and Aston's motion, which is essentially the officer's motion with a few relatively minor changes. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That's passed unanimously. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to 7.3, Collingwood Football Club works at Victoria Park. We've got no registrations. Councillors, do you have any questions to officers on this agenda item? councillor Wade does?
I might need a second, sorry. I remember the first one. I just wanted to confirm, there's listed somewhere in this report that I currently can't find, a number of community events, including the RecLink Community Cup, and they weren't listed specifically as being protected under this new deal. And I just wanted to confirm that RecLink and the other, the other events in that paragraph, Lula Palooza, are all going to be protected as well.
Through you, Mayor. Your point number 14 in the paper, yes, they're all protected, there's no change to access to any of those groups. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from any of the councillors? I'm looking for a way forward. councillor Aston, you're moving the officer recommendation?
Yes, please.
Is there a seconder to that? councillor Harrison, thank you. So councillor Aston, please move your motion.
With pleasure. As far as I can say, this is a win-win arrangement. This is fantastic for the Collingwood Football Club because they get some stuff that they want, but it's even better for the city of Yarra. We get a top notch quality ground done by some of the best football ground experts in the city. We retain all of our community access, including for those particular events. We get upgraded lighting, the community will still retain access to the outskirts of the ground while the refurbishment's being done. And we save a bucket load of money that can be used to direct towards other things where we cannot work with a corporate organisation to do that. So I actually think this is a fantastic example of where we can work well with corporate entities or businesses to deliver really good results for the community that help us achieve what we're after without any kind of financial impact to us, but doesn't deliver any kind of negative impact to the community at all. I'd like to thank Ms Wilkinson and Sam for negotiating this with Collingwood and persisting every time we asked and said, please go back and ask again, and they did and they came back with a really great deal. I also think that this sets the tone for future endeavours where we may look to engage with corporate entities, say on Collingwood Town Hall, and how we can make sure that we get really great outcomes for the public while also partnering with corporates where we can.
councillor Harrison?
I won't say much other than reiterate what's been said there, this is a great outcome. So thank you to the officers who worked very hard to negotiate an excellent outcome for the community and the AFL as well.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this matter? councillor Davies?
I just, actually just want to agree with councillor Aston. I think this is a really good step into a new future and how we engage with the private sector. And, how's it go? Oh, I was going to play good old Collingwood forever, but it didn't work. So anyway, that all went wrong, didn't it? But I do think this is a great opportunity. I really want to say thanks to all the officers for making this happen. Great work.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this matter? councillor Gomez?
I'm old enough to remember when Collingwood had a permanent home at Victoria Park. This is nothing like that and it shouldn't be because those days weren't great. But it's good to see that some of the... it's good to see that some of the stories, the old stories of the area are coming true again, where the Collingwood Football Club can have a presence back at Victoria Park, but in a way that supports the community's use of the park. Thank you.
Just want to add, just hopefully it's an influence to other people who, other, other, other large corporations who want to work at Yarra Council. Collingwood Football Club, I'm as sceptical of them as anyone. They're a large corporate enterprise. I don't buy into this black and white army BS. But they did come and put their money on the table. They came with an ambid claim, which was ridiculous. We sent the officers back. They came, and the officers, as councillor Aston said, negotiated clearly extremely well, because they came back. And all their initial attempts to cut locals' access to Victoria Park, which will not get passed for a space on this council, they gave up on. The only people who are going to lose out is the unpost, but they're going somewhere else, actually somewhere better, to be honest with you. So, like, I know it's the mother of all cliches to say a win-win, but to get $3 million from the largest football club in Australia of any code into a totally underfunded local council is a good day. So I want to thank all the councillors for pushing hard on this and the officers for the great negotiation skills. And I have to be frank, I hate saying it to a bunch of capitalists, but well done to Collingwood Football Club for putting $3 million on the table. I think it's going to be good for Yarra and particularly good for that facility. And it means that's $3 million that we won't have to find, that we can put into things like, you know, cleaning our streets, childcare, more parks, and so on and so forth. So anyone else want to speak? Councillor Aston, do you want to exercise your right of reply?
I will just say, I forgot also to mention that while this is great for Yarra, it's also really good for the AFL women's. And we know that there is a, you know, increasing uptake and interest in women's AFL. And having a really high-quality ground at Vic Park will just support both the Collingwood women's team, but also the other women's teams who play there. And, you know, is, is really very much in line with our, you know, diversity and inclusion within Yarra, where now we will have even greater facilities for young girls to go along and watch, you know, hopefully their burgeoning football heroes to encourage more young girls to get involved in sport. So I think it also has that benefit. But mostly, I'm just really pleased about the fact that it's going to be such a benefit to Yarra and that our local residents around Vic Park won't, won't lose out any access. So I highly encourage all of my fellow councillors to support this, because I think it's a great outcome.
Thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. Thank you all. We'll move on to 7.4, building a safer Wellington Street NDC corridor, phase two, community engagement. Are there any questions to the officers? Janet Christie, sorry, sorry, before I move on, we've got three registrations. I do apologise. Janet Christie, you're first, if you're here, please.
My name is Janet Christie, and I've lived in Hodgkinson Street between Gold and Wellington Streets for over 40 years. I also speak on behalf of other many long-term residents in this section of Hodgkinson Street. We are dismayed by the two proposals for stage four of the safer Wellington Street corridor. Stage four in west, in Clifton Hill, west of Hoddle Street, is mainly a residential area, and the majority of homes have no off-street parking. There is almost no mention of local residents and users in either of the reports reporting, supporting the proposals, and certainly no mention of the impact the proposals will have on the locals. Both proposals for stage four reduce parking in Wellington Street by 50%. Overwhelmingly, this parking is used by residents. Those who live, work, visit and park in Wellington Street will now have to park in the surrounding straits. Those who live in the surrounding straits will now have to park in the other surrounding straits, et cetera, et cetera. These proposals are only about cyclist safety. There is no consideration for the safety of those who live, work and attend the school and church in these proposals. Parking in this area has safety issues for residents now, particularly at night. It is already difficult to park in our section of Hodgkinson Street at night, and we often have to walk a long distance to our homes in the dark, in my case, alone. As people age, it's increasingly difficult to carry heavy or awkward goods over a long distance. Accidents can occur. These proposals discriminate against the injured elderly and those with disabilities. Both stage four proposals expect everyone, including those in wheelchairs and using walkers, to cross Wellington Street to their homes, as well as to negotiate barriers on the road. Reports supporting the proposals focus on stage three data, but stage four is being treated in the same way. For example, there's no accidents in stage four. To gain space in stage four of Wellington Street, remove the trees and shrubs in the middle of the road, or one way for cyclists in Wellington Street, the other way for cyclists in Gold Street. Both become wider roads for all users, and the parking in Wellington Street can stay. The proposals for stage four discriminate against the residents and users of this area in favour of cyclists who actually have no origin or destination in the area. Council is supposed to represent us, not the ride-through cyclists
Thirty seconds.
and the bike lobby. We pay for it, the cyclists pay nothing. Removing 50% of the parking in the stage four of Wellington Street will have a major impact and cause many problems for local residents and users in this area. We hope council listen to our concerns and amend these proposals, so that everyone's safety is paramount, paramount, and no resident is discriminated against. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. The next person is Karen Hovenga.
Hi, I'm Karen Hovenga. I'm hoping that I sort of am wasting my time in being here today, and that, as was promised as part of the Elizabeth Street bike lane changes, we were going to get some great bike lanes and bike facilities in Wellington Street. I want to note that there's 2,000 bikes a day who are heading down that Wellington Street area. And if you compare that to the 90% of cars that aren't stopping in Yarra, or the 10,000 cars that are using that street, or the 9,000 cars using Wellington Street that aren't stopping in Yarra, it's a lot of cars. I've actually got a really great video on my Instagram showing me passing 120 cars as I ride my bike down Wellington Street. I use it all the time. I'm heading to Northgird, I'm heading to Brunswick, that's where I'm going. Wellington Street is a really important, I guess, almost superhighway in Yarra for bikes. And I really liked the concept plans and their comparisons to Canning Street and Napier Street. The experience of Canning Street is that City of Melbourne used Canning Street in their advertising about what a great bicycling city the City of Melbourne is. And yet, most of that great bike facility is actually Canning Street. And I would recommend that residents in that area go and take a look down Canning Street and enjoy the lack of cars and how quiet it is on the street. And I suspect that all of their house prices are going to go up if those, if those roads are closed and there aren't a traffic sewer right outside their front door anymore. I really hope that you send all of these ideas off for consultation. You've spoken a lot about engaging with the community and the consultation. This Wellington Street thing has been in consultation for a very long time. Projects for bike lanes take a long time to come through, and this is a really important step on the path to having those bike lanes installed. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Karen. Next person is Elizabeth Clarke.
I ride to east Brunswick up Wellington Street a lot. And these two strips of Wellington Street are the worst part of my ride. The road is narrow, uphill, with cars passing close to me. I ride there with fear and extra vigilance until I've safely crossed the mighty chasm of the Queen's Parade to the safe territory of Delbridge Street. I'm delighted and grateful that this problem is being taken seriously. So many riders are choosing the route. Conditions are changing all the time. Each improvement of bike infrastructure brings more riders. But these plans take so long. When can kids going to school off Wellington Street safely ride to school? Please send these plans on to the next stage. The future is rushing at us. Bring on the community engagement for these concept designs.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, councillors, have we got any questions to the officers? Mary Osmond, councillor Gomes has got a question, wants Mary, and Phil, welcome, and Simon Oxon. So once Simon sits down, can councillor Gomes, can you ask a question, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, just a general question. I foreshadowed some of this at my ward meeting last week, and there was a great deal of interest. I'm in Nichols Ward, so it's technically not part of my ward, but a lot of residents would use Wellington Street both for driving and for cycling, and I'm sure for walking as well. So the question I have is, how long do you plan to have the consultation phase going? My recommendation, talking to, or knowing the residents like Janet and other people, is that we keep going for a bit longer, because I think it needs to percolate out through the community.
Officers?
Through you, Mayor. So the proposed length of consultation is four weeks. That's what we've proposed in the community engagement plan.
I've got a question, then councillor Wade, after. Can you just explain the different options? How many car parks will be lost in the different options? If any of those options were to be, were to eventuate on amended, so to speak?
Certainly. So the options that are proposed for, for the south, so we have option one and option two for the south section, they both result in minimal parking loss. We don't have an exact number, because we haven't done the detailed design yet. So between 10 and 20, depending on what the detailed design comes through. For the north section, the second option requires at least half of the parking spaces to be removed on one side of Wellington Street. And option one is a similarly, similar number to options one and two for the south section.
Thank you. Councillor Wade?
Can I just ask a follow-up question to that? So, sorry, the option ones and option twos are slightly lost on me. The, there is an option for the Clifton Hill section that has minimal parking loss, is that correct?
That is correct. That would be option one, the bicycle street option.
Option one for the Clifton Hill bit, which is the north bit, is minimal parking loss. Okay, thank you. Sorry, there's just a lot of naming conventions. I also wanted to ask, these things, it says obviously we have to do this consultation, which I understand takes at least a month. And then officers need to work through all of the feedback that we receive, which will obviously be quite extensive, I'm sure. It says that we'll get a report back in 2026. I just wanted to ensure, in terms of timing and community expectations, will that still mean that it will be eligible for a budget bid next year for the detailed design work, whatever that looks like?
Through you, Mayor, that's correct, would be, under the current timeline. So early 2026 is what we're scheduled for. There's a lot of unknowns in between now and then that we have to consider, but that's what we've currently scheduled.
Thank you. I had a question about the paragraph 25. There's a reference to the North East Bicycle Corridor, which I'm not sure is something I've, I'm super familiar with. And I was wondering if officers could speak to that a little bit more, including the timing for that.
Of course, through you, Mayor. The North East Bicycle Corridor is a proposal as part of the North East Link project to build a new off-road shared path on the north side of the eastern freeway. It would link the existing Coonan Creek and Yarra Trail right through into Yarra. And we're expecting that as part of the North East Link project.
Sorry, and any approximate timing? I imagine that'll take a while.
So the North East Link have informed us that they'll have their UDLP, the Urban Design and Landscape Plan, ready for public consultation in November. And that will be included as part of that consultation process, which will be public. And these documents are available through the environmental effects statement process, which council lodges a submission to, and other documents that the North East Link have provided.
Thank you. Councillor Davies?
Just coming back to councillor Gomes's question about the engagement, which I think is a good one to focus on. We've, we've had mixed responses to the Lennox Street and Belmain engagement process in terms of the limited window for people to be able to engage. Is there any opportunity for the Wellington, going forward into these, for these engagements, is there any opportunity to expand that engagement period beyond four weeks to, say, two months or three months?
The CEO is going to respond to that one.
Through you, Mayor. Councillors, in terms of the, so the adopted engagement policy talks about a four-week process. So it's council's policy. It is, of course, open to council in any circumstance to extend the engagement timeframes. The, it's got to be balanced with delivery, though. So the longer the consultation process, the, it will absolutely lead to delays in delivery and, and timing. So it could be that, so that's something for council to balance. You can consult an infinitum if you want to, but we, we also need to, councillors made it very clear, they expect us to deliver. So we won't be able to do that in the, in the timeframes that you're expecting if you add to that process.
Thank you. Any other questions to councillor, no, councillor Etway, did you have, no? Okay, looking for a way forward. So, sorry, did you, you were going to suggest a way forward. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut in. I was just going to say I'm happy to move the officer's recommendation.
I'm quite happy to second it. Just for those of you who didn't, weren't here at the start of the meeting, the ward councillor, councillor Mackenzie is quite ill tonight, and that's why she's not in attendance. It's really, I spoke to her on the phone, she's very upset that she's missing this, very keen, probably watching from home. So councillor Wade, would you like to exercise your, your moving rights? You've got three minutes starting now.
Yes. Thank you to our submitters for coming and speaking to us tonight. And I, I look forward to hearing feedback from you, your neighbours, everybody, everybody that wants to talk to us during this consultation window. Councillor Mackenzie is a fellow ward councillor, the mayor, and I have had kind of extra briefings from officers. And I'm really convinced that the consultation programme for this is quite aggressive. There's a plan for a very, sorry, I, I speak with my hands, a very wide distribution of information to the community, a pop-up schedule so that we're talking to people on the ground. There'll be signage, there'll be a lot of ways to make sure that this is known. I think our consultation processes are getting better all the time, and notification of them is getting better all the time. I also, as ward councillor, will be absolutely pushing this out to my community to make sure I hear what they have to say. This has already been a really long time in the process. I was pretty shocked when I was reading through the report to see that the, the southern phase of the Collingwood bike lanes, of, of the Wellington Street bike lanes in Collingwood, which is, is my ward, were completed in 2019. That's a, that's a very long time ago now. And I think it's, there's a lot of latent demand in our community for them to be extended and for the streets north of Johnson Street to be made safer. I had a couple with a young baby tell me the other day, oh, yes, we'll probably have to move out of this neighbourhood eventually, because it won't be safe for our kid to get to school on their own. And I just found that pretty crushing. Like, they, they said that would determine where their kid went to school and if they would keep living in the area. For me, one of the, like, unbelievable things about this proposal is, is that it will make life in, and I'm going to focus on northern Collingwood, because that's my ward, so much better for residents in Collingwood on foot and on bike. People getting around, people having a drink on the street, businesses being able to serve their patrons. It just will quieten down the street quite significantly, akin to Napier Street in Fitzroy, which is just a beautiful place to be. And that's a, that's a bicycle street, or, or Canning Street, as the other example. So what we're looking at in northern Collingwood is something like Napier Street in Fitzroy, or Canning Street in North Carlton. And those are just beautiful streets. And currently, Collingwood is seeing, the, the stats in the report, 88% of the cars driving through are not stopping in the area. And so I completely sympathise with, I'm sorry, Ms Christie, saying, you know, you don't want to prioritise people just cutting through over your residents.
Thirty seconds.
And I understand that on bike, but also by car, that this really prioritises our residents by saying that these streets are for, for people. Importantly, in Collingwood, we're not losing parking, and we just are saying to people, like, let's share the road a little bit more. Let's have something like Fitzroy has, let's have something like North Carlton is, because those, those streets are beautiful, and that's what I want for Collingwood as well. So really looking forward to having, getting into deep conversations with people during the consultation process.
Thank you. In seconding the motion, I just want to put a bit of context to this. The Copenhagen dedicated protected bike lane, whatever you want to call it, from Wellington Street, sorry, from Victoria Street in the south to its current finishing point on Johnson Street, is a gold-plated from Victoria Street in the south, to its current finishing point on Johnson Street, is a gold-plated, one of the best bike lanes, safest bike lanes anywhere in Melbourne. The problem was that it took 10 years to deliver. I spent a lot of trying and trying and embarrassing previous councils to fast-track this and get it up and running. We don't want to delay it another 10 years. This council is very, very proud of the fact that we're going to put this out to consultation. And we want to get, subject to the consultation, money in the budget, in next year's budget, to deliver ASAP, same as what we want to do in many other parts of the city of Yarra. Language Street, improve cycling on Gibb Street, and Coppen Street. We're looking at Lennox Street, most importantly, Linear Park, which is true. The idea came from previous councils, but it was just hot air. Only this council was able to get the money from the federal government, thanks to the leadership of councillor Gomez in particular, to make Linear Park on the agenda. So I'm still waiting, I'm not going to get it, I know, for an apology from all of those people who are two rallies outside the front of Richmond Town Hall, telling the world on social media, some of them are in the crowd here tonight, that we're going to rip out bike lanes. We're doing exactly the opposite. We are the mother of bike lanes. We, this is going to be such an improvement in Collingwood, in, what do they call it? Your ward, Collingwood, Hoddle Ward, sorry. And also in Yarra End Ward. Councillor Wade, next week, has got a meeting where I'm sure she'll be supplementing the council four weeks with her own. I know councillor Mackenzie's already had meetings in the area, and she'll be having more, she told me, today in that area. And then it will come back to council for a final decision. This will be extremely democratic process. No one likes losing parking, obviously, but something has to give, because I think the greater good is, I remember when we pushed through the bike lane, the last one on the lower end, the current one on Wellington Street, we had all manner of people telling us that the sky was going to fall in. I remember Weton Wellington, the owner is a mate of mine, Shane, he came here, he said, my business is going to be closed in a week. Now, I've never been to Weton Wellington, but my friends who do go there tell me that it's a thriving, thriving business, and that bike lane has not done anything to undermine its success. I think it's, no one is saying that what the officers have put here tonight is definitely going to be done unamended. We're going to listen to the community, like we always do. But like, honestly, if we pull this off, it's going to be, can you imagine on Wellington Street, getting on at the, like, cycling from Victoria Street and going all the way up to Queen's Parade? I mean, that's amazing. And it'll be, and then when you throw in Linear Park, like, it's just so exciting. So I'm hoping that we authorize the officers to go into phase two, get it out there to the community, listen carefully, and hopefully, we get some results ASAP. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this motion? Councillor Aston?
I'll be voting for this, simply because, as Karen mentioned, we are very, very big on consultation. And we've said that's what we want to do, and we mean it. I strongly encourage all the people who live around these affected streets to get involved in the consultation process, whether you like it, whether you hate it, whether you're indifferent, whether you would like to see a few subtle tweaks or something completely different, make your voice known. Because as the mayor said, we will be taking into account all of the feedback to try and come up with a solution that works for as many people as best as possible. We know that we have a lot of, a large cycling community in Yarra, and yes, we are a thoroughfare for cyclists outside of Yarra, as we are for cars. But we're also a home for people. So we need to make sure that we're balancing the needs of all of those voices. And the only way that we can do that is if people get involved in the consultation process and tell us what they think, so that we can listen to that and include that in our decision-making. So please, please get involved and make your voice and your views known.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this matter? Councillor Wade, would you like to exercise your right of review? Yes?
Just very, very briefly. I just wanted to echo that the, we're putting these out because they're concept designs that take in some of what we've heard so far at the first stage of consultation two years ago. But to an extent, people can't visualise what things might look like until we put forward an idea. And so that's what we're doing now. We've got two kind of different ideas for each section, and they look quite different for each section, which is why I keep stumbling over the naming. But that doesn't mean that the final version will look like any of those four things. So that's why we want people to talk to us. The mayor, often at PDCs, says, you know, come to us with what you want or your ideas for how to change it. So what I'd really encourage people to do is if you don't like what's in these versions so far, that's absolutely fine. Talk to somebody, ask them questions, and come to us with like, what you think would work better. And I really liked Ms Christie's idea about using Gold Street, for example. I thought that was a really practical solution. So come to us with your ideas. We really want to hear them. We want a great outcome, and we can only get a great outcome if we hear from our community. So I'm really excited to get into these chats about trying to make our streets the best they can be for everyone.
Thank you, councillor Wade. I'll put that to the floor. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to 7.5, 2024-25 Annual Financial Statements Performance Statement Adoption in Principle. There are no registrations. Are there any questions to Mr Brockway? Councillor Gomez?
It's a draft, it's a John. Given that the mayor and myself are being asked to certify these statements, could you give us an overview of these statements?
Thank you, councillor, and through you, Mayor. The statements are prepared, in line with the Local Government Act and the Australian Accounting Standards. They go through a rigorous audit process with the Victorian Order of the General, and also through council's Audit and Risk Committee. So it is a good result this year. I'd just like to note that the overall comprehensive income statement result is not a profit. It's often misinterpreted as a profit that council makes, but it has a number of non-cash items in it. And if I could chunk up the concept, council creates a surplus in order to pay for capital works and to repay borrowings. So that's what those funds are for.
Thank you. Any other questions? Looking for a way forward? Anyone to move the officer report? Councillor Gomez, is there a seconder to that? No, that matter falls then. Oh, councillor Harrison, sorry. You've got three minutes starting now?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I compliment the CEO, officers and staff for their efforts for the last financial year. Council's operations generate a surplus. It's important to know that it's not a profit, as John said, but we've significantly improved our cash position, which is a marked difference from the previous council's positions, to the point where a monitor in 2021, I think, questioned the financial sustainability of this council. So we've come a long way from that. We're paying off debt, we're squirreling away a lot of money into reserves. I think these results are fantastic. As a member, as the council delegate on the Audit and Risk Committee, I am pleased, honoured, whatever the words are, to certify these results. I commend this motion to my fellow councillors.
Thank you, councillor Harrison. Anyone want to speak to this matter? Okay, I'll put it to the floor. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. We'll move right along to 7.6, proposed discontinuation and land acquisition of View Street, Alphington. No registrations. Any questions to Mr Fakuri, from officers, from councillors? No. Okay, I'm looking for a way forward. Councillor Wade, I'm quite happy to second that. Councillor Wade, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I would. I wanted to thank officers again for a diligent report in what can be a quite complicated and somewhat dry matter of digging through the records to look at who owns land and how it's owned, and all the easements, and contacting all the authorities. It's a tricky job, but one that's very important to get right. So we, all due respect to Mr Fakuri for doing that work for us, we really appreciate it. I just wanted to say this is a really exciting opportunity. I grew up just outside of Alphington and going to these wetlands, I must say, I thought they were already publicly owned when I was a kid, and then I learnt when I was older that they were just generously allowed, a local resident generously allowed the community to use it. And now a local resident is generously allowing the community to use it long term by initiating this transfer. It's a really exciting opportunity. I know councillor Mackenzie, the ward councillor, the deputy mayor, feels the same way. It's a beautiful site, and I'm pleased we're able to progress it this way tonight. If anybody has any other views, they'll be welcome to put them forward during the consultation that will be initiated if we pass this shortly.
Thank you. I won't speak in seconding. Any others, councillors want to speak to this matter? No? Okay, I'll put that to the, councillors, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. We'll move on to 7.7, proposed discontinuation of the road between 261 and 263 Holden Street, Fitzroy North. There are no registrations. Again, I'm going to ask councillors, do you have any questions to Mr Fakuri? No, I'm looking for a suggested way forward. Councillor Gomez, moving the officer recommendation? Do we have a seconder for that? Councillor Harrison, thank you. Councillor Gomez, please speak to this.
I'd like to add, Mayor, that then, this has come through council chambers before. I see no issue with it, and I commend the motion to my fellow councillors.
Thank you, councillor Harrison. No? Anyone want to speak to this? Okay, I'll put it to the floor. All those in favour, that has passed unanimously. 7.8, Governance Report, September 2025, no registrations. Are there any questions to Phil Delosa, the manager of Governance and Integrity, from councillors? No, there's not. Okay, do we have a mover of the governance report, please? Councillor Ho, a seconder? Councillor Gomez. Councillor Ho, would you like to speak to this?
Well, I'd like to congratulate the new officer who's been appointing this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ho. Councillor Gomez?
Nothing to add other than to agree with councillor Ho.
Thank you. Any other councillors want to speak to this matter? No? Okay, I'll put it, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. We will now move on to notices of motion. We've got three. The first one, notice of motion 15 of 2025, M A V and V L G A. You've all got it in front of you. There are no registrations to speak. I'm going to move it. I think councillor Davies is offered to second. No, sorry, that's a different one. M A V, V L G A. Is there anyone that wants to second this motion? Councillor Harrison. Okay, so I'll just speak to this. I think there's a lack of clarity and transparency about the role of M A V and V L G A in the community, even amongst councillor cohort, not just on this council, other councillors. And that's questionable, because we pump $70,000 a year into the M A V. I'm not sure how much we put, seven zero, yet. I'm not sure how much we put into the V L G A, but we'll find out if this report is passed. I think they've been less than brilliant in being lobbyists on our behalf with the state government. Maybe that's related to the fact that two-thirds of their income come from the state government, and who wants to bite the hand that feeds them? I think that in many ways, they haven't been great in supporting councillors when faced with complex issues, mental health issues and other issues around Victoria. That's clear. Their procurement process, which probably is an advantage to us, doesn't, in my opinion, transparently show savings, or more importantly, list the suppliers that they use. This is something that I think is in the public interest, for that to be out in the public. And what this motion aims to do is for the officers to come back, tell us exactly what we're pumping in, tell us exactly what the benefits are of M A V and V L G A membership, and then we can have a rational discussion around it with community input. And I know in other councils, the feeling is quite strong in this too, in many other councils, not all councils, but many other councils, especially because of the levy issue, where a lot of regional and rural councils feel the state government have really got it in for them, and the M A V have not been the greatest advocates for those. In words, they have, but in action, they haven't really done much. So that's the point of this motion, even if you think, I'm talking to my fellow councillors here now, that the M A V and the V L G A are the greatest thing in world history, this is only asking for a report for the benefits and the disadvantages of being a member. So presumably, we're going to, it's going to strengthen somebody's argument, potentially your argument. So I'd encourage you all to support this motion. Councillor Harrison in seconding?
Yeah, look, I just point to the issues that Mayor Jolly has alluded to with regards to how strong the M A V has been advocating for the sector, the 79 councils, which you think might have a bit of sway, given that there's so many of them. So hopefully, this, the proposed report will, you know, detail the merits of the membership of these two organisations, and we can have a clearer picture of the benefits.
Thank you, councillor Harrison. Would anyone else want to speak to this motion? No? All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. We move on to 8.2, notice of motion 16 of 2025, waste charges and E S C. Again, that's myself. I think councillor Davies, sorry for misseconding you there, I think, to coin a phrase. Thank you for seconding this motion of mine. So look, in a nutshell, one of the core policies of some of us who were elected to council last year was to get rid of the bin taxes, we described it, or the waste charges, to give its official name. And because we missed the boat with getting permission from the E S C and putting our case to them and the state government on that matter, we either had to either give up or go to Plan B. And we went to Plan B, and we explained that to the public, which was basically, just to remind everyone, we limited the waste charge increase to the same rate as the rate charge increase, which is 3%. And in effect, neutered one of the key reasons for the introduction of the waste charge, which is to shiftally get around rate capping at the expense of residents and small businesses. Obviously, that's sort of been lost in the wash a bit, because the levy has now put an extra massive component. I got a call today from Friends of, Friends of Sorrento, Flarus of Sorrento, who've told me that they're going to close down this week because of their rate bill. When I cross-examined them on the phone, it was the bit of the rate bill that comes from the levy, which is still terrible. I mean, they've been in this area for zillion years. Anyway, coming back to my motion, what this motion is about is for the officers to come back and give us the facts and say, if you want to go down what you said you to the community back in the election campaign, and reintegrate waste charges into the, to rates, if you want to do that, this is the timeline, this is the process, and also this is the cost to the council, to ratepayers. Secondly, if you want to do what you did this budget, which is just cap it, you know, to the rate increase, this is the cost. It'll be, I guess it'd be relatively similar to what it is this year. Or the third option is just to give up on the whole thing, and just to keep it as is. There, I can't think of any other options. There are probably the three options. The problem we've got at the moment is we don't have any up-to-date facts, like how much time do we have to put it to the E S C? How much will it cost if we went full Monty and reintegrated? What would be the impacts on residents, but also on businesses? Some people might benefit from it that are unexpected, and some people might lose. So we need more facts so we can make a rational discussion. So again, like with the last motion, even if you think waste charges are the greatest thing in world history, this is not an anti-waste charge motion. Ironically, this is a motion to get more facts so we can make a key decision in time for the next budget process. And we're not just dealing with hot air, but we're actually dealing with facts delivered by the officers. And that is the point of this motion. Councillor Davies?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for leading on this. I think we both campaigned strongly on capping waste charges, and I think this is just the natural next step, to really look at how we can actually future-proof our community from huge rate increases that we saw over the previous council, which I believe over the four-year period went up some 22%, according to the CFO at City of Yarra. We don't want to see that again. We want to see rate caps held at 3%. And obviously, the mayor's doing a great job of doing the due diligence to look at the costs and to see what that outcome can look like. And hopefully, we can see our future communities protected from increased costs of living. To the mayor's point, we are about to see a huge number of local businesses go out of business because of the levy. I've already had two other businesses in the last week tell me exactly the same thing. In Richmond, they are going to be out of business very soon. This is going to have a massive impact on us, this levy, and the more we can do to protect future, protect ourselves, our community, our businesses from future rate increases, the better.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Would anyone else want to speak to this motion? Councillor Gomez?
I do foreshadow an amendment.
Yes, can we get it on the screen, please? So that amendment was circulated to councillors probably 24 hours ago. For me, I'm quite happy to accept it. Councillor Davies, will you accept that amendment from councillor Gomez? Yeah, absolutely. Take your time. Councillor Gomez, just for anyone in the crowd or anyone watching, can you just explain in very simple terms what the amendment is?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor. I fully endorse everything you and councillor Davies are saying. I just wanted to make it absolutely clear. It's probably surplus for your needs, but I wanted to make clear that when the waste strategy is developed, when the analysis is put to us in the community, that we do consider the option, which is utilized by most other councils, which is not a waste rate that's based on the net asset value of someone's home, but a simple flat charge that says that a bin that's picked up on, you know, Queen's Parade in Fitzroy North, and a bin that's picked up in Lennox Street, Richmond, are the same thing.
So my understanding, if I've got you right, that your amendment is not So my understanding, if I've got you right, that your amendment is not locking us into one or the other? It's just looking at that as an option?
It is not. It's just more information.
On that basis, I'll accept that amendment. Councillor Davies, as indicated, he'll do the same. So, um, that's incorporated now into the motion. Would anyone like to speak to this amended motion? There is no right of reply because it's been amended, but, um, sorry councillor Gomez, I do apologise. Please speak.
Uh, so it's just, uh, thank you mayor. So just, uh, to continue with the, the conversation. I think it's important to realise that this has been a long festering issue for many people in the community. Um, the, the introduction of the waste levy at, at the time was, uh, met with a lot of resistance, a lot of friction and, and most importantly, a lack of understanding of what we were trying to achieve. So the waste strategy as a whole on this council has been a success. Uh, the Fogo bin, uh, the diversion of, of recycling, of substance from landfill, um, it's all been successful. But people don't understand why we charge the way we do. And so I propose that this motion simply go through the process, as we always should, and perhaps we should have done back then in the last council, to just explain to people what the options are. I'm not proposing that we, uh, it be anything other than a revenue neutral to council. In other words, whatever model we choose, it's not gonna cost council a dollar more or less. Uh, and I just, in the spirit of advising the community, bring them along, because they are the ones who are paying this, that we explain our actions.
Uh, thank you councillor Gomez. Would anyone else like to speak to this amended motion? Councillor Wade?
Uh, I mean, I think people know my position on this. Um, the waste charge is something that almost, I think every single council in Victoria charges. They generally charge it at the amount of cost recovery. Yarra was the last one to make this move. Um, I feel very confident that I, I have all the information and I've made this decision before. So I understand if councillors want more information, um, but that's why I'll be voting against it. The one thing I just wanted to draw attention to is this flat rate model was discussed extensively two years ago and our community is a very progressive community. They believe in people paying, um, according to their means, according to what they have. Um, the rate model was chosen very intentionally. I had this discussion with many, many residents about why the rate model was chosen over a flat charge model. Um, councillors, including this council, have seen modelling which shows that people in, um, higher value homes benefit enormously from a flat charge, which is what these words, these added words are suggesting that we do. Um, and people in lower value homes will have to pay a lot more than they are currently paying under a flat charge model. So I, I don't like the idea of us going down a flat charge model path. I think councillors have this information before them. I think this conversation can be had with the community now. But, um, I appreciate if you want more information and, you know, you'll vote for that and that's fine.
Thank you councillor Wade. Anyone else like to speak to this? Councillor Austin?
Um, I think I just wanna, I, I support this. I think information is great. Um, particularly too, while we, we currently don't have the waste, uh, strategy, uh, completed. Um, you know, depending on how long that takes, we need, need to move into another budget cycle and so we need to be prepared to know what we are going to do in the event that these two things don't, uh, coincide together timing-wise. I, I'm not sure that I agree with Sophie's assertion that people are happy to pay more based on the value of their property. I think councillor Gomez just raised that, that that is a potential concern and, and a, a black spot. I know within my constituency, within Abbotsford, that's not the general theme. That's, so I, that may be the case for some people. I don't think that we can assume that it is the case for all. It was a large election issue and people are asking for us to look into how we might be able to change it, to make it a different form of fair. So I think it's an important piece to look into. Um, and I think it's, it's good timing now so that we can start getting prepared for the next budget.
Councillor Harrison?
Um, yes, look, I just wanna reiterate that point there. I recently, and going back to the election campaign, I've had a number of older residents raise with me that they've been hit by significant waste charges, their unfixed incomes. It's had a, quite a substantial effect on them, so I'm really keen to look at this issue and find out if there is a better way.
Thank you. Any other councillors? No, there is no right of reply. I'll put that motion, uh, that, that notice of motion, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Davies, Gomez, Ho, Jolly, Harrison, Austin, those against, councillor Wade, that has passed. Um, I'm gonna propose a five-minute break. Um, some of the councillors have requested that. Uh, we'll be back in five minutes' time with a notice of motion on road fatalities in Yarra. Thank you councillor. See you in five minutes. The rest of the meeting, um, we're moving up to eight point three, notice of motion seventeen of two thousand and twenty-five, road fatalities in Yarra. Councillor Wade is moving it. Councillor Wade, have you got a seconder? Councillor Harrison? Um, councillor Wade, would you like to speak to your motion, please?
Uh, yes, I will. Um, I think it's, uh, fairly self-explanatory. Um, but what residents might not know is that councillors and even the council don't actually get a huge amount of information about fatalities on our roads or serious injuries on our, on our roads. We certainly don't get it in a timely fashion. Um, this is something that, um, all of us, I think, who care about road safety and who care about transport, um, think should, should change and that we'd like to see more information. Um, we are a road management authority and to various extents, we are responsible as an entity for what happens on our roads. And so I think it's really important that we get that information, that we care and that we use it. Um, I, I was prompted to put this motion forward after hearing about a death in Fitzroy North, um, at a, like approximately seven o'clock at night, a woman in her thirties, um, crossing Nicholson Street. Just absolutely horrible circumstances, not something that anybody would wanna hear about. And I, I haven't been able to get almost any information since and it just kind of shocks me that this is, this is, you know, if this was somebody dying in one of our pools or in our libraries, we would of course be like, you know, doing everything we could to fix that situation. And, and when it's happening on our roads, it, it just seems like a different set of standards at the moment. Um, I also just think it's a basic respect to people who have, have, in particular, the people who have died, but also those who have been seriously injured, to at least consider what we could have done to save them and, and ideally to make sure that no one suffers the same fate. Um, the first step for that is to be informed of deaths and serious injuries. And so this, this motion is just trying to get more of that information in front of councillors so that we can make those kinds of decisions and, and hopefully make our roads safer for everybody. Um, whether on foot, on a bike, in a car, whatever, like for everybody who uses our roads, we wanna make sure that they're safe.
Thank you. Councillor Harrison?
Um, so firstly, just thanking councillor Wade for, um, preparing this notice of motion, which I'm really happy to support. Um, I am a person who has lost a close family member through a road fatality. Um, and so for me, I just think it's really important that we, you know, do all that we can to, you know, avoid similar incidents and if we don't have information in a timely manner, then we're probably not doing everything that we can do to, um, you know, address any issues that are within council's power to deal with. So, um, you know, and this is also about just ensuring that we're, you know, directing our resources, I suppose, to the, to the places where, um, the resources are needed the most. Um, so that's, um, I think really important for me to, to, as a, um, I guess, a, a council that said that I want to be making decisions that are based on data. I think that it's really important that we have as much information as we can get. That's it.
Thank you. Um, just councillor, before I open it up to other councillors, councillor Wade and Harrison, the, the officers have just pointed out that you've got October, that they've requested if you could change that to November. Did, if you, do you agree to that or not? Yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll take that as a given. We won't, we won't make that an amendment, so you'll still have your reply. Just, that's just a minor thing. So it'll actually be November council meeting that will get the report back. Would any of the councillors like to speak to this? Councillor Davies?
Like question of the officers, if that's all right? Yeah, um, to Mary, um, would this report in any way, um, slow or impact the, um, the parking strategy um, in terms of that being processed and, and flowing through?
Councillor, uh, sorry, Ms Osman?
Uh, through you chair, no.
The questions or contributions, um, councillor Davies?
Yeah, just another question now to officers. If, uh, is, uh, is this information already available to us through Vic Roads or Victoria Police? Is, is it available without officer, um, sort of, uh, uh, input? Is there another source?
Uh, councillor CEO wants to answer that?
Uh, through you mayor. Thank you for the question. Um, that'll be the sort of, that'll be the sort of, um, investigation that we'll do in preparing this report to highlight what is and isn't available, um, uh, and the sources of that information. So I can't answer that right now, but we'll do that work.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this? No right of reply on that basis. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. That is passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move on to petitions and letters. I don't think there are any. Am I correct? Yes. We move on to questions without notice. Do any councillors have a question without notice? No. We'll move on to delegate's reports. Well, the advisory committees haven't really started yet, so it's unlikely. Sorry councillor Davies?
Quick wind back to the questions with notice?
Yes.
Um, it's probably a question that it's, we've been talking about, which is about the, um, the bush kinder permit. Is, 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 can we ask, has there been any progress on that, please?
Um, Ms McGrath, Carrie McGrath, please? Uh, sorry, Mr Hewitt?
Uh, thank you mayor. Yes, we, uh, some inquiries were made of, of, uh, council officers last, late last week about bush kinder down in Burnley Gardens. Um, the, uh, kinder in question has been very generous towards us. There's been a series of meetings, one yesterday where we walked the site with representatives of the kinders, offered some planting day opportunities for the kids, tried to demarcate spaces where we hope the kids will be and won't be. Uh, the kinder is very appreciative of our efforts and we are very appreciative of the work, the good work that they do for our littlest citizens. Thank you. Councillor Davies?
Yeah, so I just wanna ask him, that bush kinder, how's it, how long has it been in operation for? I think it's with Dane Mally. Is it, is that correct?
Ms Hewitt?
Uh, a bit outside my pay grade. I'm sorry mayor, but we, we could do our best to.
We'll have to take that on notice.
Yeah, I just, I just, just to give some context to the, to the, the question is, I'd just like to know how long it's been operating and, and what the benefit of having a permit system would be for this bush kinder. I mean, we're dealing with little kids. We want them to get their hands dirty in our, in our, um, in the environment and get used to the environment and, and respect it. I think just would like to just, um, yeah, ask the question is, uh, do we really need a permit for this?
Thank you councillor Davies. CEO?
Thank you, um, through you mayor. Thank you for the question. Um, councillor Davies, that's really an operational matter. I'll provide some responses. Um, uh, but, um, managing programs and kinder programs and, um, permit systems and balancing competing needs for spaces across the city is really operational. Um, so, uh, I'll, I'll take your, um, your commentary as editorial and thanks for your views. Um, but I'll provide facts about permit systems.
Thank you. Any other question, any other questions without notice? Delegates reports? No. Uh, general business, we do have one general business motion from councillor Wade. We're affirming, or affirming I should say, Yarra City Council's commitment to community inclusion and standing against racism and vilification. Councillor Wade, is the, the motion is on the screen, I do believe? Yep. Do you have a seconder to that motion?
I actually, I actually have an alternate motion.
Just, just, you have to just get the seconder first. Um, uh, I'll, I'll second it. Um, councillor, so, so we now, um, is this an amendment or an alternative motion?
An amendment, pardon me.
Do you wanna let councillor Wade know what your amendment is, please? And if it, if it's, if it's accepted to councillor Wade and myself, it'll be incorporated into the motion. If it's not accepted, we'll vote on your one separately first. Thank you.
Do you want me to speak to it or just in terms of what it is?
No, no, first of all, you have to say, you have to get a seconder first. So first thing is just tell us the gist of the amendment in, in objective, sort of factual sense.
Yeah, I think, um, we need to, I, I think the motion that, uh, councillor Wade has put forward is, um, is excellent. Um, I just feel like we need to actually just expand this, um, to be a much wider, um, to, to be encompassing something much wider. I think the, the intention is really that, you know, we need to renounce hate speech and all acts and all forms of it. Um, I do, again, applaud councillor Wade's initiative to afford the, uh, more opportunities to acknowledge, um, sorry, I'm just gonna read this out, to address racist and discriminatory behaviour. Oh, okay. Yep.
You're adding the word multiculturalism?
That's correct.
To the first sentence, you're putting in a, you're taking out the bit that showed aggression and hostility to first peoples. That's the attack on camp sovereignty. You're taking that bit out. You're asking, you're act, you're putting in a point three, which acknowledges and condemns all acts of religious persecution, noting in particular?
Yep.
The record number of antisemitic incidents impacting the Australian Jewish community. And then if you can just, thank you, go on.
Correct.
And then you've added in words. And then you've added in words like extremism in all forms rather than far right?
Correct, and social cohesion, inclusion, social cohesion again and general person safety.
So that's the amendment from councillor Davies?
Yep.
Before I I have to get get a, do I have to get a second before we ask the mover to accept it or not? That's the best way to do it, is there a second for this councillor Aston, councillor Wade, do you accept this amendment?
Not in full.
Yeah, me too, so what we're going to do now is we're going to vote on the amendment, there is a second, councillor Aston has seconded councillor Davies' amendment, so what we're going to do is we're going to speak, we're going to debate the amendment, so what's going to happen is councillor Davies is going to speak first, then councillor Aston will have an opportunity if she wants to to second it and speak to it and then we'll discuss it, then we'll vote on it and if it's passed, it'll be forcibly incorporated into the motion, if it's not passed, we're back to the original motion from councillor Wade, so first up councillor Davies, you've got three minutes to speak to your amendment, starting now, thank you.
No, thank you Mayor and thanks for pulling me up on it earlier, I agree with the intent of the overall motion from councillor Wade, wholeheartedly, I also want to say I renounce hate speech and acts in all forms, I applaud councillor Wade's initiative to afford Yarra more opportunities to acknowledge and find ways to address racist and discriminatory behaviour and dangerous rhetoric that further marginalises our most vulnerable communities, that's why I think it's an imperative we acknowledge the record number of antisemitic acts that have occurred in Victoria in two thousand and twenty twenty four and already in two thousand and twenty five, including the most recent arson attacks on an East Melbourne synagogue, at our first meeting, following the recent council election, or at least not that long ago, we heard from several members of our local Jewish community who felt abandoned or ignored by the city whilst acts of hate committed against them were on full display, I swore when I joined this council, I would represent all members of our community regardless of gender, sexual orientation, colour or religion, I seek to make this motion more inclusive in contemplating ways to advocate for our most vulnerable community members and most importantly to acknowledge one of the most targeted groups by extremists right now in our state and their behaviour.
Thank you councillor Aston.
I'm supporting this amendment because I think there are some good points in here that make the original emotion stronger and more meaningful for a broader range of the community, I'll be interested to go through point by point and see what the what councillor Wade will accept.
Well, it's not a, it's not, it's, we're rejecting the amendment, we're voting on the amendment, not not, yeah, but she she does, but we're not going through line by line, that's not how it works, so we've got an amendment which has not been accepted, we're devoted, voting on it separately, maybe we can get governance to, maybe at the next council meeting to go over some of these rules about how it works, but what we're debating now, and I'll let I'll open it up, is the amendment in totality, so all the bits in yellow that councillor Davies and Aston have added, if you like, added and or replaced with councillor Wade and Jolly's motion, that's what we're debating as a as a whole, so have I got any of that wrong Phil? No, that's correct, okay, so is this a question?
Yes.
Yes, far away.
Just for clarity, Mayor and to councillor Davies, on line number two, item number two, it says condemns the thirty first, the thirty one August twenty twenty five attack on Camp Sovereignty, on the motion that I can see in front of me, there's a line through the next sentence that showed aggression and hostility to first peoples, is that correct? You're striking that out?
Yeah, because that is completely, because we didn't, that should have been put in yellow, I think, probably, because it's clearly part of the amendment, not, so that's a good pick up councillor Davies, so yeah, just just to, I've just asked governance, so the last bit of sentence in point two is part of councillor Davies' amendment, if I've got that correct councillor Davies, thank you, okay, so we've heard from the mover, we've heard from the second, would anyone like to, now we're talking about the amendment here, not councillor Wade's motion, would anyone like to speak to the amendment, well, I will, I think this is a mistake for two reasons, first one is if you attack the thirty first of August attack on Camp Sovereignty, which sent shivers down the spine of anyone with any emotion or any empathy in in Australia, you have to also add in the second bit, because it wasn't an attack on Jewish people or on Muslim people or on Icelandic people or on Irish people, it was clearly attack on first peoples, I mean, why would we take that out is beyond me, the second thing I think is the mistake with this is highlighting only one section, there's absolutely no doubt that antisemitism, and there's been an increase in antisemitism in Australia over the past, we don't need to go over to that, we, I don't think anyone doesn't accept that, but we've also had increases unfortunately in racism in generally, in general, against other sections of the Australian community and to pick only one and not the other is a big, big mistake, we know Islamophobia exists, there's absolute trauma, for example, in the public housing estates of Yarra amongst people from the Horn of Africa, from the Middle East, because of what's going on in Gaza right now, and also racism against Muslim people, we've had racism particularly seen at the same at that rally on the thirty first against Indian community, but the one I want to highlight is you only have to look at the news tonight, the South Sudanese community are currently, as we speak, under a massive attack, somehow there to blame that two of their, you know, two kids, one of whom, by the way, went to Collingwood All Stars Basketball Club, Collingwood resident, young kid, and you only have to listen to three A W, read the Herald Sun, there's, it's on for young and old in terms of attack on the South Sudanese community, so if we're gonna, so I think that the way it was in the original motion of councillor of councillor Wade and myself is to say all types of incidents of racism, including against Jewish people, including against Jewish people, need to be need to be condemned, if we just pull out one, say for example, we only pulled out Muslims or we only pulled out South Sudanese, we would be, I would, I would accept a criticism from members of the Jewish community, why only highlighting them and not us, because, you know, so it has to be all in or not at all, and I think that's the reason we should not accept this amendment, that's me finishing, anyone else want to speak to this amendment councillor Wade?
I'll just speak to say, I completely agree with everything the Mayor just said, I very carefully framed this, I got advice from officers to make sure that it was in compliance with the law, to make sure that we weren't discriminating with any particular group, that 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 is what was intended, this is a point in time thing, it was about the thirty one August twenty twenty five attack and it's been, it's been carefully framed to target that and if I, when I get a chance to speak to that, I will, but the wording was carefully done.
Anyone else like to speak to this, there's no right of reply to amendments, so we're going to go straight to the vote, so what you're voting on is the amendment from councillor Davies and Aston, if you're in support of that amendment, please raise your hand now councillor Davies, councillor Aston, although, and councillor Ho, all those against councillor Gomez, councillor Jolly, councillor Harrison, councillor Wade, that amendment is lost, so now we're back to the original motion of councillor Wade and myself, councillor Wade, you've got three minutes to speak to that, starting now.
I'd like to start by just pivoting to something positive, today was a day where treaty was introduced in the Victorian Parliament, this is something that I think, I know I grew up hearing about treaty and in fact, I've worn my shirt in celebration tonight, it's something that all Victorians, I think, can be really, really proud of, that we're the first state that has had treaty introduced in our Parliament, the fact that that's happened in such circumstances, so so in such close proximity to such a horrible event is is sad, but also speaks to the fact that there are so many people in our community and we've we've heard tonight from how much we all care about making sure that discrimination ends in our community and that's a really, really positive thing, the attacks on Camp Sovereignty were horrific, I think the Mayor put it well when he said anybody with empathy couldn't help but feel feel for the people being attacked there, people were attacked on the ground, multiple men onto onto women on their own, it was seeing these men run up the hill in black gear, neo Nazis, people who claim to be neo Nazis is a truly, truly horrible thing, multicultural communities and councillor Jolly has spoken well to to the fact that they're integral to life in Yarra, all of us agree that multicultural communities are integral to our life here, deserve respect and deserve to feel safe in their community and I think what we saw on the thirty first was just this very real feeling that that people didn't feel safe and that they were targeted just for the colour of their skin, so that's why I thought it was worth recognizing, worth recognizing this tonight and and I hope my colleagues support me in condemning the event and reaffirming our commitment to equity, diversity and inclusion.
Thank you, I won't speak in seconding, I think I've already spoken, would anyone else like to speak to this original motion from councillor Wade and myself, no, well then we'll just put it to the floor, sorry councillor Davies?
Yeah, I just wanted just to, I do again commend councillor Wade for putting this up, I think it's, you know, it's an excellent motion, I was hoping to compliment it, not to dilute it, so just for clarity, absolutely believe what you're suggesting, that the far right movement coming up and doing that to our local community, to our local Indigenous community is obscene and just should be rejected at all levels of government, including local government, so I just will, I will be supporting this absolutely one hundred and twenty, two hundred percent, but I'd also like us to look into the future with how we can actually support other minorities who are being attacked equally.
Thank you, anyone else like to speak councillor Gomez?
Apologies for everyone, I saw this amendment late, I'm not quite sure why, I support actually both sides, I understand the issues that councillor Wade and Mayor Jolly are raising, I also truly support, I think, the intent of what councillor Davies was trying to do. Racism is bad, I think many of us have experienced it, it's something that's truly horrendous to society and so I compliment everyone tonight to put a very firm foot in the ground to say this is unacceptable and if this helps, I fully endorse it and I commit it to my fellow councillors.
Thank you councillor Gomez, anyone else like to speak to this councillor Wade, would you like to exercise your right of reply? Okay, we'll put it to the floor, all those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand, that is passed unanimously, thank you, we'll move on to urgent business, there is a urgent business motion in front of us on the upcoming Melbourne Water engagement on updated stormwater flood mapping, I'm going to move this motion, I have, councillor Gomez is going to second it, so just for those of you listening and those of you, the last few people remaining in the room, this is one of the most significant things, and I'm speaking, this is a bad thing, not a good thing, this is one of the most significant things that's happened in Yarra in recent times, on Monday, the twenty ninth of September, not very long away, Melbourne Water are going to drop maps out in the public with a half hour, let me rephrase that, with a with a second rate consultation, where we, by the way, are just going to be asked our opinion, there's no guarantee they'll listen to us, where they're going to drop flood maps, which will, if all else being equal, massively increase insurance premiums for for landowners and therefore renters, will lower property values and most importantly, zero information of what they're going to do to fix any stormwater drains that they claim are not up to scratch, we know with climate change, it's going to be more rainfall, we know this is an issue, what we've tried to do with this year council in the current budget is put a foot on the pedal in fixing our stormwater drains, from memory, it was councillor, Mr Hewitt can correct me if I've got wrong, four point two five million or four point six million, it's one or the other, it was over four million that we spent on stormwater drains in this year's budget and no doubt, and I hope we do the same next year, but there's nothing about what they're going to do, for example, with the Swan Street, the Swan Street stormwater drain down the bottom end of Richmond, which we know needs work, there's nothing in this about this, so what they want to do is just cover their backside, they're just going to put this out there, make it the problem for all that land, landowners, the homeowners, the residents in in Yarra throughout Melbourne and then just say, we've done our bit, so this motion is quite strongly putting it back on them, that we want these maps, we want, well, I'll just read out the key bits, not 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 not, the, we're seeking clarification whether the the whether the future draft planning scheme amendment material will be made available to council and the community, we want requesting detailed drafts of the proposed planning scheme amendment materials and advice and seek clarification whether the support any future planning scheme amendment has been provided by the Department of Transport and Planning to Melbourne Water and I'm hoping that we and other councils can work together to put the heat on the only people that Melbourne Water will listen to, which is the state government, because they're clearly not interested in what the councils and the community think, so we have to make our stand tonight and then we'll reach out to other councils to get them to join in and put the pressure on, this is, this is, this is going to go down so badly, all of all, and I say this to my fellow councillors, your phones are going to be ringing hot, your emails are going to be ringing hot, when people jerry on to what's what this, what this is all about, so I think this motion is very strong, it was drafted by the CEO, I thank you for that, I think it's an excellent piece of work and I'm hoping that we pass it unanimously so we get a clear message to the Melbourne Water, to their masters and to other councils that we've got to stand up strong on this one, councillor Harrison, seconding?
I think it was me.
Sorry councillor Gomez, I apologize.
Just through you Mayor, look, this was a very animating issue during the campaign for council, it is a hot topic among owners, the experience in Brisbane where something similar has happened in terms of flood oblate is not helpful, residents are going to be very angry that this is occurring again, I foreshadowed this at my ward meeting last week, there was both shock and resignation, this is happening yet again and I reminded them that never let an election go to waste and it's time for the community to make their views clear, as the Mayor said, that this process, whatever it is, needs to be examined very carefully and that people are not, through whatever means, unfairly impacted, this is the first time, this is one of the times when the 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 notion of addressing climate change hits home very hard, literally hits home very hard, so this is something that we're all going to think about and we're all going to deal with as a community and that starts by making everyone aware and making everyone reacting, thank you.
Thank you councillor Gomez, anyone else like to speak to this councillor Harrison?
I'd like to reiterate what the Mayor has said, this is a really outrageous approach to this problem, I know that council officers have been advocating for some time for the state government or Melbourne Water to do something about the Swan Street main drain, today I had recourse to go back and look at the technical report that wasn't released publicly, but which had been given to some residents by council, which showed some of the hotspots that we have around our municipality and I shared information with the Mayor about the fact that one of the areas where he will be dealing with residents that have got a development facilitation program application coming along, that that is right in the middle of one of these hotspots marked all in red, we are seeing no evidence that Melbourne Water is going to do anything, as the Mayor has said, four point two six million is what council has spent in the current budget on this, we are doing all that we can to address this issue, but the state government has been completely silent on this issue, it is simply intending to put this back onto council and homeowners to deal with this problem and it's, it is truly outrageous that this is the situation, that they are silent on this issue and expect us to deal with it and mark my words, what we will find is that when the residents find out about this, it is our phones that they will be ringing, we will be emailed, they'll be blaming council for what in many instances is the woeful inadequacy of the stormwater infrastructure maintained by Melbourne Water, so I commend this motion and we really need to take this issue up because the residents are going to be so angry and we have to do something.
Thank you, anyone else like to speak to this councillor Wade?
Just to say, this has been a long saga, I appreciate, I'm in a different position on the flood mapping that council put out last year to some of the other councillors and have different views on that, but we were trying to work with Melbourne Water at the time and we had thought that at the time, Melbourne Water was going to release this, so the fact that they've hung on to it for another year, year and a half and then dumping it without discussion is, I feel my colleagues' pain and I hope that they do so as transparently as possible from here on in and thank you to the CEO for for chasing these things down.
Thank you, anyone else, I just will exercise my right of reply, one point I forgot to make is the impact this is going to have on housing supply, we debated housing supply in the context of a tiny little laneway behind Peter Moniz earlier on tonight, this is much, much more significant, what developer or construction company is going to build? What developer or construction company is going to build in a flood overlay? What impact will this overlay have on currently existing planning applications in the city of Yarra and future planning applications? What impact will this overlay have on the 44,000 new apartment target that they've set us? One hand is not talking to the other. If they want us to meet their 44,000 target and they put this overlay on us, well, they've got to fix the problem or help us fix the problem. It's an existential crisis. No one, it can, no one's blaming anyone for the fact that the stormwater drains were mainly built in the 1800s and we're now in the 21st century. That is not, that's not Jacinta Allen's fault or Brad Batten's fault or anyone's fault. That's just, you know, life. But we have to have a strategy to fix it. You can't fix it with a legal, shifty little legal manoeuvre, bringing in an overlay and thinking that fixes it. You know, if the stormwater drains are not up to scratch, they need to be fixed. And the government needs to help us because we know we haven't got the money to do it. We can hardly keep our head above water as it is. So this is, you know, I cannot underestimate, overestimate the importance of this attack from Melbourne Water and this, the impact it's going to have on Monday, the 27th of September, when this drops. So hopefully this motion is passed. That's all I've got to say. We'll put it to the floor. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. Councillors, now that the, I move that the meeting is closed to the public in accordance with section 66 to a of the LGA to allow consideration of confidential information. Do I have a second? Councillor Wade, all those in favour? Fine. Okay. So in two minutes, we'll go into confidential. Those of you who can't be here for confidential, could you please leave now? Thank you for coming. And we've got two items under confidential and we'll start in literally two minutes. Thank you.